This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of August 4th, 2021. My name is Jack Jumpsack and as the Chair of the Planning Board, I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:36 PM. This meeting is being recorded and it's available via Amherst Media livestream. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this planning board meeting, including public hearings, will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may be, may do so by following the link shown on this slide. This link is also available on the meeting agenda posted on the town's website calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the planning board webpage and click on the most recent agenda which lists the Zoom link at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the meeting will be permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so for reasons of economic hardship, and despite those efforts, we will post on the town of Amherst website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. For members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name and mute yourself, answer firmly and then place yourselves back on mute. And I believe, yeah, I'm just looking at our roster here. Yeah, okay, so Maria Chal will not be here. Andrew McDougall will not be here. So Tom Long and Doug Marshall. Janet McGowan. Johanna Newman. And, you know, myself. So that's five of the seven. We have a quorum. So Board members, if technical issues arise, we may need to pause temporarily to fix a problem, then continue the meeting. Discussion may be suspended while the issues are addressed, and the minutes will note if this happens. Please use the raise hand function to ask questions or make a comment. I will see your raised hand and call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. Opportunity for public comment will be provided during the general public comment period and is reserved for comments regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Public comment may also be heard at other appropriate times during the meeting. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your telephone. When called on, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address, and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. So residents can express their views up to three minutes and at the discretion of the board chair, if a speaker does not comply with the guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation will be disconnected from the meeting. So Pam, we don't have minutes. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, hey, we have Chris here too, which is good, good. And then, so public comment. I'm looking within our, you know, attendees and if there are any hands raised, we will definitely, you know, hear your comments. And I see none. Okay. So let's get into this and we have number one on our agenda at 6:34, 6:40, and this is, you know, 6:35, so we're good to proceed with this. It's SPR 2022-01, Town of Amherst, Sweet Alice Trail Bay Road, request site plan review approval under section, Sections 3.335, 7.9, and Section 8.5 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new 20 space parking area, including one accessible space and adjacent loading zone, and to install appropriate signage for access to the Sweet Alice Trail Recreation Area, which is map 25B parcel 55, and it's an RRO zoning district. So Rob, are you going to make a presentation on this? Okay.
Yes, I am. And Pam's going to help me out by bringing up the couple of plans, if she can go ahead and do that. So I'm Rob Moore, Building Commissioner. I work in the Conservation and Development Department and assisting Dave Zolmec, the Director of Conservation and Development with improvements to a number of trail parking locations across town. So this is the first application for that type of project coming to the planning board. This is a parcel of land just east of the roundabouts on Bay Road. It's a one acre parcel. It is surrounded by a number of other parcels owned by the town totaling another 50 acres or so, and then it also, that abuts Commonwealth of Massachusetts, 220 acres or so of property that has this Alice, Sweet Alice Trail running through it. So this is the site here shown on the plan, like I said, just east of the roundabout. Pam, if you want to go ahead to the next sheet, we'll get right into the proposal here.
Just so you know, they're, they're not in any order, so if I don't pick the right one, just let me know.
Okay, nope, this is it. There's only two sheets. So this is the proposed parking layout on that parcel that was shown on the last page. We're looking at 20 spaces, which by the way is a maximum. There's a potential, and Dave Zolmec did mention in recent days that there's a potential to reduce this by a few spaces, which would pull the, the back edge of the lot to the north, but otherwise be the same design, but perhaps a few less spaces. But this is a 20, maximum 20 space lot. There, the, the finish on the lot will be all gravel TRG finish with just, with a paved apron at Bay Road to, to, to comply with the curb cut standards that, that the public works department would require. Up close to the road, there'll be a parking identification sign, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And then there's a, working our way on the, I said, the, the west side of the lot, there's, what's shown there is a new stone dust path. Now that path is for future connection to a trail system that's being proposed right now through the Conservation Commission to run west to the Kestrel Land Trust property around the pond and connect into that larger acreage that I mentioned earlier. So that's just a, an access point that we're just kind of prepping for off of this parking lot that will be part of a future project. Both sides of the, the parking area will have a split rail fence. That's a detail that the Conservation Department is looking to have at, at these locations. At the back, south side of the lot, we're proposing three large boulders just far enough back in case the staff decides to plow this in the wintertime, leaving enough room for snow storage, but preventing vehicles from driving off of the, the gravel parking area. You'll see on the south side that there's another area shown in stone dust material, which is the, going to be the new access to the Sweet Alice Trail. It's shown way down on the bottom right corner, the existing trail, just yep, right through there, continues straight out to the Bay Road. So we're going to tie into that, connect into that around that point there and, and create a fairly level, but solid firm surface to connect into that trail. Back at the parking area, I don't know if you would be able to zoom in a little bit, Pam, to that, where the kiosk is down to the south there to the bottom of the page. There'll be a kiosk. This is a standard kiosk that the Conservation Department is installing at all the trail and recreation locations for, yep, right there for various signage or notification or information about the location that, that you're visiting. Just behind that, there'll be a couple of our standard 24 inch bike loops, steel bike loops set in a concrete footing right there, thanks Pam. And then you'll see that right at parking space number 10 is the accessible parking space that'll receive a sign with the loading zone just to the south of it. This proposal is, is made under Section 3.335 of the zoning bylaw. This is our, our section for public parks and recreational areas. And we are going to be asking for a number of waivers. So if you could kind of scan over, scroll over to the side, Pam, please, to the, to the pictures. So there are two signs, one being the kiosk. If that's considered to be a sign, it will have notifications posted on it that could change. But the back side is intended to have information about the location. This is a kiosk that was recently installed at one of the other trail locations on Stanley Street. The, the second image there in the middle, which is just showing a signpost, that's the, the, just showing an example of the signpost that the Conservation Department would like to install out by the road to identify the parking area and the trail. And, and the bottom two images are the same image, just in different colors. That's the sign that would be proposed to be hung from that wooden post out by the street. Two-sided sign and you can see they haven't made a choice of color yet, so I put the two of them in there. They, the bylaw allows for one sign, I'm sorry, allows for two signs, but up to a maximum of 12 square feet. So what we're proposing here is going to require a waiver because of the size, the size of the kiosk and the size of the sign out by the road combined will exceed the 12 square feet. We're also asking for a waiver for that signpost. Although it does say four feet high there, it's actually going to be six feet high or would like to be six feet high after I discuss that further with Dave Zolmec. So the top of the sign would be proposed at six feet. So we have a waiver request for signage under Article 8, 8.5, and specifically in Section 8.101, which has the maximum 12 square foot limitation, and we're proposing up to 24 square feet between the two signs, including the kiosk. And Section 8.103 is the, the provision that limits the height of the sign to four feet off of the ground, and we're asking for that to be increased to six feet. Back over to the parking, Pam, if you would, scroll back. We're asking for waivers on the parking area as well. Section 7.9 waiver request will include three, three specific waivers. One is under seven, Section 7.104 for parking space delineation. So like I mentioned, this is in gravel, trap rock finish, some stone dust where it needs to be, you know, smaller aggregate and smooth around the accessible spaces and the walkways. So it's, it's very difficult to maintain striping in this type of material, although we do intend to paint it initially, hoping to establish parking patterns, and we're going to test that out over on Stanley Street and see how that works. But it will only last a month or so, maybe a little bit longer before it's worn away. But it is something that we're not necessarily looking at maintaining long-term. The second waiver request is under seven, is because of 7.105, which is the lighting requirement. So we're not proposing any lighting to these town trailhead parking areas. And the last one would be 7.112, which is the screening requirement from the street. This is a wide open, clear view from the street. There's no, no vegetation out there that'll, that'll be blocking the view at all. We are, let's see. I think that covers what I wanted to propose. So, oh, I did have, um, there was, I think Tom might talk about this, but the DRB comments were received and I was able to incorporate most of them, which included relocating the access to the trail in a, in a location further to the south, back of the parking lot. There was a request for a place to leave a bicycle, so we, we did go ahead and add a couple of our 24 inch bike loops. And at that time, when I was discussing this with the DRB, I really didn't have any details about the sign. And there is a very small wooden sign that marks the trail location now, which is very difficult to read, and it was a recommendation to consider a more visible sign for those passing by and trying to find it. And, and this, in fact, what the images that are on the plan that we looked at is, is what the, the Conservation Department is, is looking to do at all of their locations. There was one other recommendation for collecting trash and recycling. This just isn't a location that at this time we're interested in, in having the receptacles there. We're hoping to encourage people that bring any trash with them, that they take it away rather than leaving it. But, you know, this is one of the locations as, you know, all of them through town that are managed and visited regularly by our conservation land manager, his assistant, and the various seasonal staff to, to maintain and keep the area clean. So that, that's all I have for the presentation and happy to answer questions.
Okay, hey, Chris, did we, did we get the DRB?
Yes, you did. It was emailed to you. I'm sorry that it came late. I think it was emailed either yesterday or today.
Okay, well, we'll let Tom cover that, and then we'll also have the site visit recap by that'd be Doug. So maybe we start with Doug.
Okay. Well, Chris and I ended up going to the site separately, so I can tell you, I, I saw the, where the Sweet Alice Trail came out to the road. I saw the area of the shoulder and beyond where the vegetation has been worn away because there's a lot of parking that's going on just along, sort of parallel parking along the side of the road. I agree that it's quite an open landscape. I did see a sort of a moan old farm road that was a little bit east of where the Sweet Alice Trail came out. I, I wondered whether that was part of the site. And I wondered also, I've never been on the Sweet Alice Trail, and I don't know how far back, how far it goes or where it goes. But I was kind of interested to think about how large this parking lot would be in relationship to the, to the property. So anyway, that's kind of what went through my head when I was there.
Was anything like staked or anything like that?
I didn't see anything.
Okay. All right, um. So I guess, is this connected at all to the project? That is, you know, east of, of Atkins, that I forget which development that is, Chris, but because there was another trailhead over there that they were talking about.
Yes, I think you're talking about the Epstein property, and we saw the Kestrel Land Trust was relocating their offices onto the, onto that Epstein property, and they're hoping to have trails there. And the trail that goes towards the east that Rob showed you on the plan is going to connect to the trails that go through the Epstein property. But that connection hasn't been made yet.
I was, I was thinking about the subdivision, like there were like eight lots. A little bit south of.
Oh, no, it's not connected with that.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
That's farther to the south, yep.
Okay, all right. So, hey, Tom, would you be able to download the DRB report?
Yeah, I mean, I think Rob did a great job of summarizing it as well, so I don't really have much to say other than that. If you had seen the plan previously, you would see all the changes that were actually made, which I think the DRB would be really happy about. The concerns that were, were raised were, you know, mainly in regard to what was presented last time, which you guys didn't see this time. So it's hard, it's hard to really talk about them other than the, the improvements that were made. And Rob went through the list. Obviously signage was one. Those little white with red etched, that, that was the sign that we saw. We were asking for something more broad that can be seen perpendicular to the road, so people can see that as they drive by. That was one of the main requests. The other one was about safety within the lot. The, the current or the proposed access to the trail at the time was on the, that would be the east side. Yeah, if I was facing north, that's the east side. And we felt that people would be more inclined to walk to the south and enter the trail through the bottom of the lot. So it was changes like that. The bike rack was a request, which is present as Rob said, which we thought would be great because people will ride there, hook up their bike and then go for a walk, and we thought that was a great add-on. So thank you for doing that. And, and then the marking of the, of the parking lot is something we tried to talk about having options for, but that's really a challenge, which you're clearly asking for a waiver for, because we do want this to be a permeable surface. So that, that's a real challenge, unless there's some innovation in that area. I think our biggest concern was for the ADA spot and making sure that that was well-marked in, in some, some manner to make sure that the space was, was always ready. And then obviously the trash versus carry in, carry out, and that's just really a matter of what, what the, the town prefers for this particular site. So, so those are the recommendations, and I think, you know, this looks great as a, as a response to that, so we appreciate it.
So Chris, I, I know this probably dovetails into this initiative. I believe the chamber or the bid, you know, in terms of like promoting tourism within Amherst. So now, you know, obviously having parking at these trailheads is important. Can you, are you, do you know what I'm talking about there, Chris?
I'm not that familiar with that initiative. I know that the bid and the chamber have been trying to promote tourism all along. It could be that as a result of their recovery grant that they received, that they're putting an extra, you know, effort into that, but I'm not personally aware of that. I'm sorry to say.
All right. So thank you. And so we can take planning board comments. I see Janet.
Um, so I, the first thing I wanted to say, I think these are very appropriate waivers. You know, the compelling reasons of site design. I was worried when I was just looking at the sketches, I was like, this seems really intense for a trailhead, but the design that you've put together is a trailhead. It doesn't need lighting. You know, it needs a, a good sign, but not, you know, a lit sign, because, you know, you don't want to encourage people to go at night. So I think, I think the waivers make perfect sense. I think the sign is beautiful, like the, either color. I did have a question about the number of spaces because it seemed like a lot, and I just, you know, is, does this trail get a lot of use, or is it expected to as it ties into kind of a larger network? Yeah, and I also think like the spaces, it's not going to look that big from this, from driving by or walking by because it's kind of in, not super wide on Bay Road. But I just, I just wondered about the thinking of the number.
Rob?
Yeah, so, you know, as I mentioned, you know, we, we started off, you know, it was first asked of me to come up with a 20 lot state parking area. But Dave Zolmec did mention that, and this isn't, this is being done in cooperation with the Kestrel Land Trust managers there, because I think there's, there's not only the potential for the use for the Sweet Alice Trail, but there's also the potential to go west and connect to what they have planned for future programming and activities getting into their property. So it'll, it'll serve both functions long-term. So the maximum of 20 spaces is, you know, I think what was originally envisioned for that. I can say from my experience, which is not a lot at all for these trail locations, this is a very busy location. It's not unusual to see cars lined both sides of the street, and if you've been by there, you'll see how it is worn even on the north side of, of Bay Road. So, you know, we're hoping to clean that up and, and make that, you know, grass again and less, look less desirable for a parking or likely to be used for parking. So this is really taking David Zolmec's recommendation of a 15 to 20 lot parking space need here.
It also seems much safer to be larger than having cars parked along Bay Road. Does that, that make sense? Okay.
The other thing, yeah, I was going to just comment on that, that as you drive along Bay Road, you'll also see other smaller parking lots along that way, because the Sweet Alice Trail is actually just, you know, one end of, of an access point to a whole network of lower trails on the lower end of throughout the range. So from that point, just like you would from the visitor center, which is a lot that, you know, at 10 AM on a Saturday is full, and that has, I don't know, maybe 40, 50 spots that you can imagine people who want access to that main trail network would also find this is a really safe and nice place to park because the other spots are always overloaded and only two or three spots to park there. So, so I think it's convenient, and I think it really serve access to, to a wide range of trails there.
Great. So we have Doug and then Johanna. Doug?
Okay, yeah, I had, I guess, a couple of questions and one comment or suggestion. First of all, I'll just make all my comments and then Rob, you can respond to whatevers. First was, why would the kiosk be counted as a sign? I guess maybe I don't understand the signage bylaw well enough, but, you know, it seems really far setback from the street. It's not really part of your perception as you drive by. So why would that be included in the, in counting square feet? And then the second thing was if this, if the approach you're presenting with this six-foot sign and maybe the kiosk is the first installation of a whole series of installations, you know, should we be talking about this as approving a system to be applied in multiple places in town? So you don't have to come back for every single one of these and, you know, have this conversation. And then lastly, I was just a little bit puzzled whether the gravel surface is, is allowed by ADA or Mass Access Board? And, um, you know, what the, what the situation is with that. And then the comment I had was, I have seen gravel parking lots where at the sort of edge of the lot at each of where there would normally be a stripe, they will put a, like a short granite post or a little wooden post to just give you a sense of the nine-foot spacing that you're using and, and, and sort of encourage, give people a guideline, a guy, a marker to encourage them to efficiently use the lot. So I wondered if you'd thought about that. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Rob?
Yeah, thanks, Doug. I wanted to be as careful as I could with the kiosk. It is in plain view from the road, and it, as they're being installed, are just a, a blank backboard. So I don't really know exactly what potentially it could be used for. Messaging or whatever could be put on there possibly could be viewed from the road. Maybe this is a little far away, but in other locations that I'm seeing, you probably could read it from the road. So, you know, based on our, our definition in the bylaw, really is anything that's trying to provide some sort of a message or invitation to the area or location of some sort. So I just wanted to be, you know, make sure I had that covered just in case, you know, it turns out to actually be more of a sign for advertising purposes for, for the location than, than possibly not. I do know that on the backside, which would be away from the road, the intent is to have some information about the location, history and some, some information for people visiting. So the surface, the, the gravel does comply with AAB standards. So, you know, we're using a small three eighths aggregate that is compacted, rolled and, and becomes very tight and firm. It, it, it does meet that standard. I'm looking at probably doing even a smaller aggregate at the parking area, the handicap parking area and the access to the trail out of stone dust material, just to finish that off. But it is, it is used, it's commonly used for rail trails and a variety of uses for, for public use that can meet accessibility requirements. The conservation department knows that it's a maintenance item. So it isn't just, you know, something that's going to be good to go for year after year after the winters. So they'll probably be touching it up, you know, every year and making sure it's in compliance. So that's the AAB. The last, what was the last, sorry, what was the last?
Well, I had the suggestion about the post at,
Oh, the post.
Nine foot spacing. And then I also had the question whether we should be thinking of this signage as a system that we could approve for multiple uses throughout town.
Yeah. So the, um, the, the, the system for multiple uses would be probably a good way to approach it. These sign designs just came in a day ago when I received them. So I think we're still, you know, I think they're still refining that and finalizing it. And once they're, they're firm on that, I, I think the, the goal would be to take it to at least the DRB as a system signage program. And then, you know, we'll have to decide location to location. You know, it may or may not need planning board review. If it's the only thing happening, there could be administrative approval of the signage in certain cases. You know, but I think, you know, when I understand that better and how many locations, then we can, we can think about what the best way or efficient way to approach that. This just came up at this time of the application. In fact, when I made the application initially, I didn't have any of the signs included because I didn't, I didn't have that information. I was just gonna ask to come back later, but they, but they did just come in. So the markings at the, the, the parking spaces, I've seen a number of attempts to, to do something with a gravel parking lot. None of them seem to really work too well. What you're talking about, something very low, you know, that's at the head of the space concerns me a little bit because it's, it's possible that the department, the conservation department will want to plow these and maintain them in the winter time and have access to them. So that's certainly something that's going to be difficult to work around or they're going to get damaged. I was thinking more like, if there, first of all, if there's a problem. And like I said, we're going to test this out at another site with putting the paint down, letting people, you know, hopefully get used to it or see how parking is, is happening. And, and see if we need to do something more permanent, but possibly using the fence posts as those indicators. You know, would be a way to, to go about it here. In another location, I tried spacing out rocks, boulders at the head of the space, but it didn't really work out too well because they were, they were so different in sizes that it didn't really accomplish what we're looking for. So, so there was still trying to figure out what's going to be best. But I'm hesitant to put something in too permanent that will cause, you know, more work for the maintenance staff to repair and possibly be damaged from snow removal.
Thank you, Rob. We have Johanna.
Thanks, Jack, and thanks, Rob. It's exciting to see these plans. I, I guess I have a couple of comments and then I have one question. So on the comments, I've seen the kiosks kind of pop up in different conservation areas all over town. And I think that consistency is really great. It like, you know, signals to residents like, hey, there's a public resource here that you can go check out. And, you know, I've seen them at Stanley Street and at Kiwanis Park and other locations. So I think the consistency of that is going to help with the, just overall wayfinding for residents and potentially for tourists. So those are exciting steps. And then I think the signs fit into that category too. And, you know, I think the sign that you showed us is consistent with the signage and some of the imagery that we approved for Kendrick Park Playground and that, you know, we've seen in other signs. So I'm just excited about the direction that that's going in. And then in general, I think, you know, the other day I drove by Sweet Alice and suggested to my kids that we go for a walk. And then we were like, where do we park? And they were like, ah, you know, no, mom, like, we don't want to go on an adventure. So I do think that there's something about legitimizing the parking area that is going to make access that much more available to people. And that's really exciting. My last comment is, I'm excited that you're doing the painting experiment at the Stanley Street parking lot. I, it's, you know, continued to be kind of willy nilly there. And I think, you know, probably 80% of the users of the parking lot are frequent users. So if you get them doing the right pattern, I bet you can help create the culture that then kind of becomes self-perpetuating. So I'm excited about that process. And then my last question, or my last, my question is, you had mentioned fencing on both sides of the parking lot. But in the schematic that Pam pulled up, I only saw fencing on the west side. So did I miss that? Or is it, is there, are you planning on doing fencing on the east side too?
Yeah. And I don't know if Pam, if you want to bring it back up, but it is shown, it is shown on both sides. If Pam can grab that plan.
I'm trying. Hold on.
All right, Pam.
All right. So is it this one?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, if you could zoom in a little bit, Pam, anywhere in the middle, we find.
Okay.
So it's about, it's about five or six feet off of the edge of the parking spaces on both sides. I think if you look further to the west, that other line is erosion control limit of work. So it's that, that thinner line with the, with the circles spaced out every eight feet or so.
Yep. I read the map wrong. Thank you.
Okay.
Right here and here. Are we good?
We're good. Thank you for answering that question.
So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering in terms of access to the Mount Holyoke Trails from the Amherst side. Will this be, I mean, other than the notch, will this be one of the first on, on Bay Road? That's kind of like formal like this. Cause I know, you know, there's a path up to the water tanks further down Bay Road, but that doesn't seem, you know, like a formal parking area. So I'm just trying to get the lay of the land here in terms of access to the range there, Rob.
Yeah. So this is going to be the first formal parking area. So I mean, just so far, what I've been asked to look at, you know, they're all pretty rough. You know, it, it seems some of them were possibly areas that were carved out with equipment at one time. Perhaps others are just like what you see here, just cars pulling off the edge of the road. The, the parking area that's further to the east on Bay Road that has a very steep incline off of the road. Tom might know the, the, the trail, that, that location that that is called. But that's another one we're looking at doing an improvement to with a much smaller lot. You know, maybe six or eight spaces. And then, as you mentioned, Jack, around the corner at the, at the new subdivision, that's another small parking area that is being provided to us, given, I guess, set up by the developer of that, that project. And all of those have this connection. So the Sweet House Trail, if you go to the GIS, you'll see how far it actually expands. And it's, you know, there's a couple hundred acres of state property that abuts the, the 50 acres of town land and connects to the Robert Frost Trail and others in, in the area. So it's a really, uh, this is a really, uh, has a lot of potential for a, access to a big network of trails.
Yeah. And I, I know our master plan, this was a focus to, to, to increase access to the, you know, wonderful trail system that we have in town. So this is great, I think. Any other comments from the board? I see none. We can open it up to the, the public? And the attendees have any comments? I see none. Anybody want to, you know, move this forward?
I will so move to, to approve the SPR 202201 for the Sweet Alice Trail.
And there's some, yeah, you want to, Chris, you want to,
Yeah.
Smooth out some of the, the motions here.
Would you like to close the public hearing and find that this application meets the relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning by law, along with the approval and also approve the waivers? And do you have any conditions that you would like to impose?
I will move to close the public hearing. Step one.
All right. Johanna?
I will second.
Okay. So further discussion, deliberation period here, do we want to apply any additional conditions? To what was stated, it looks like the waiver was, Rob was with the height of the sign. Is that it?
The sign, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. There's, so there's two sets of waivers for the, for the signage. It's the square, the total square footage between the two signs and the height increasing from four feet to six feet to the top edge of the sign. The waivers for the parking under seven, Article seven include the, the parking space delineation, lighting and screening.
Okay. So any other discussion from the board? Any motions?
Do you want me to state a motion and someone can say they moved what I said?
That would be wonderful.
Yes. You would want to move to close the public hearing and to approve the application and to find that the project meets the criteria of section 11, the relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning by law. And that you approve the waivers requested and that you don't impose any conditions. I think that's it.
All right, Janet, and I'll second. So any further discussion? I see none. So we'll do a roll call here. Doug?
Hi.
And Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
Yes.
And myself is I and Johanna.
Hi.
Okay. So that's five zero with regard to approving this proposal. Great. So next we have a continuance. SPR 2021 11 Greenfield Savings Bank at University Drive. We discussed this previously on July 7th, 2021. This is a request for site plan review approval under section 5.043, drive-through facilities of the zoning by law to install an ATM as an accessory, accessory used to the existing bank. Authorized under section 3.358 of the zoning by law, including minor grading and paving with the, within the existing parking area. And this is map 13B parcel 20, and it's in the BL zoning district. Do we have a presentation? Chris?
We have Mr. Loin here from the Greenfield Savings Bank, Jim Loin. And I think he may be joined by Tony Gleason, who's one of the owners of the property. So Pam may want to bring him over as well.
All right. So we'll do, Doug, did you do a site visit?
Yes. Chris and I met out there yesterday evening.
Okay. So we, we can do that later then, Chris? Okay. All right. After the, after the, hello, Mr. Lloyd and, and Mr. Gleason. You can unmute yourselves and I'm not sure if you have slides or what, but.
So, no. Hi. Good evening, folks. Also, I believe in the waiting room was Tony Wansacki, who is representing the bank as our site planner. My last communication with him, I believe he was also here.
We don't see Tony. I don't see his name nor a telephone call in.
So Jim or Tony, you, you get the balls in your court to,
Okay.
We have to kind of refresh. July 7th seems like a long time ago.
So I guess where, where I'll pick up is, as I mentioned, July 7th, the, the bank wants to install this drive-up ATM. In addition to the convenience and 24 hour access for people, our customers as well as the community. We also, in the beginning phases, thought of this as an additional way for people to do their banking while maintaining safe social distancing with the pandemic still not over and unsure of what different variants we're going to face. We'd like to proceed with this. So that again, there, there are some folks that just aren't yet comfortable coming inside and would like to provide them with the additional opportunity to conduct banking. There were some questions that were brought up that I've, I've done some research and I've tried to address the concerns. The, one of the questions was regarding the illumination at night. And I did provide some pictures. While we don't have another drive-up kiosk that will mimic this one, we have a walk-up ATM in Greenfield. And the good and the bad is the only evening after dark that I had free in the last month, it seemed to be raining. So I did just bite the bullet the other night and took some photos in the rain, which they do provide. And I, I submitted the pictures, but there is a lot of glare that shows. And I think it, it makes the, the illumination look even brighter than it is. So I guess with pun intended, I'd say what I'm presenting doesn't put the, the lighting in its best light. But that means.
To bring those up?
Yes, if you could.
Okay.
So yes, this is, this is our location at the Rotary in Greenfield where 91 and Route 2A intersect. And I thought it was a, a fair representation because the, the location that we're looking for at the intersection of Amity Street and University Drive, there is also street lights which illuminate the area as they do here. And as I said, this, this is, has a lot of glare because of the rain that was in the air. But pursuant to that, I also talked with the manufacturer of these units, which is Heritage. And I believe they're out of Nebraska. But the first answer I got was that with the concern of the brightness, they could, they could adjust the, the intensity of the light by controlling the opaqueness of the vinyl that goes over the, the sign. And I actually did hear today, they had a follow-up question with an engineer who did indicate that they could in fact install a dimmer. So the lumen, the lumens and the brightness can both be controlled to, to bring that down if needed in the future. And for, for a small additional cost, it'd be my recommendation to the bank that we have that dimmer installed. Because in addition to, in addition to the, the convenience and the safety measures, we, you know, would like to maintain that we're a good neighbor and we're a good part of the community, so we'd like to make that feasible.
Wonder, can Pam run through the other images that Mr. Loin sent? There are a number of images. Thanks.
So, the other question that was brought up was they wanted to, there was a question if I could have a computer model made up of how the kiosk would look. Pam, if you could just back up, just maybe one slide? Thank you. I did check with both our site planner and with the manufacturing company and a few other resources, and I wasn't able to get a two-scale rendering or a computer simulated model. And I apologize for the crudeness of this model, but I wanted to at least provide something to the board. So, I'm not the most creative person in the world, but with some furring strips and contractor's paper, I did make this to scale. And this is from the corner closest to Amity Street. And I also had it from the northeast and northwest corners of the intersection. So that you could get a feel for how it would look in relation to the grading and the mounds that are there. So the, the structure itself, this, this does account for the six-inch curving as well as the height of the unit and the height of the lexum panels and the sides on the top. And if we could just go forward. This is a representation of the drive-up kiosk that we have as part of our Northampton King Street location. And this was just recently reskinned with new vinyl that does have our new logos in the lighter shades on it, and I wanted just to provide you with an additional understanding of, you know, what it would most likely look like. Now, of course, you know, in consideration of sign restrictions and everything else, obviously the graphics with our marketing department, they're, you know, they're adjustable. And nothing, we don't have a finished product on what the final graphics would look like, other than they'd incorporate our name and our logo, and at the last meeting, Tony Wansacki did provide some cut sheets of what the proposed unit would look like. So, and I guess the last thing I want to point out is that the reason that we chose that location in the parking lot was for safety. We did look at some other locations, but in terms of access and egress in and out of the drive-up, this provided, it was the most out-of-way location with regard to the rest of the parking and the rest of the tenants. And also had the best sightlines for egress when vehicles were leaving the queue. So I believe those were, oh, the other question that was brought up, Doug did bring it up at the last meeting and we got a little bit off, but he did ask about security cameras for the safety of people in the area, and there, there are in designs to have in, in the machine itself, there's a camera that would look at the person using the device. And as well as a camera overhead that gets a broader overview picture as well as the license plates of the vehicles, you know, should somebody approach the, the kiosk with some ill intent. Would be able to gather information from the vehicle for evidentiary purposes later. So for the safety of our patrons and the community, that there are plans for security.
I wonder if Pam can just run through the rest of these pictures, because I think it shows it from different angles. Thanks.
So, Jim, is there gonna be a canopy? As part of this?
Yes. If, in the last in the last meeting, we did have some cut sheets and I don't know. I have the paper in hand now, and I believe Tony Wansacki had provided them on the meeting of the 7th, which showed there is an overhang to this particular kiosk in Northampton doesn't have the overhang or the canopy because it's already sheltered with the rest of our drive-up lanes.
I see.
But there is a you know, the canopy with the clearance for height, which it looks like yeah, the height clearance is eight feet and the canopy height is an additional 20 inches, which are the lexum lexum panels overhead.
Okay, yeah, I'm not seeing that on your site plan, but.
Doug, are you looking at documents from July 7? Because I think I have those. If you need me to bring them up, I can give it a go.
Yeah, I'm looking at the July 7 package. And, yeah, it doesn't look like there's a canopy. So perhaps, you know, you provide that, you know, additional detail.
Can you show the image, Pam, from July 7?
I can try. Let's see. When you share.
Does someone need to take this share down?
Oh. I'm working on it, Chris.
Yeah, I have it as page 12. There you go.
Right here, yeah.
This doesn't show the canopy though, so if you continue to scroll through, you can see the canopy.
Okay.
That's it.
Right here.
So that overhead section that is indicated on the left by, says it's 20 inches in height is the canopy, and I believe if you scroll down one more it shows the side view.
Yeah, okay, so I'm not really considering that as a, like a I can't, you know, I was thinking, I was looking at the photos that you presented for the Greenfield example. And then looking at this, but it's going to be as we see right here.
Yes.
And, and not with a real, like, like where you go in a gas station, you have
No.
30 feet of roof over. Yeah, okay.
I, I apologize, no, it's enough to sort of shield the, the user from the elements, and I believe it shows on the screen that the, the overhang is 36 inches.
Okay.
So.
Gotcha, thank you.
Sure.
So, are should we open it up to the, the board if you're, if you're complete, Jim or?
Yes. Yeah, and I was just gonna say that Mr. Gleason is here as well. I know that the board had requested his attendance, they had some questions that were, they wanted to direct to him. So, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Very good, so open it up to the board. General questions? Doug?
Yeah, Chris and I did do a site visit there yesterday.
Yeah, please, yeah, so please give us a site.
And, you know, we met with Jim and with Tony, his, and his engineer. Had, I think Jim accurately conveyed the conversation we had. Tony had marked the curb locations on the pavement. So it was clear where the kiosk would be. And it fits very nicely into the existing, you know, extent of pavement, so you know, it looked like it would work well. One thing I, I noticed is that at the July 7 meeting, several of us had looked at Google Maps, the street view to see what that site looked like. That must be an old old photo because much of the vegetation between the, the kiosk and Amity Street has been removed since that street view was taken. So it's very open and visible from Amity Street. Which is, which I think it was Jim that said he, they thought that was a good thing, so that if there was any, you know, it would discourage people from you know, having any sort of ill intent in the vicinity of this machine that dispenses money. Otherwise, I guess I don't really have anything else to, to add. Chris, if you have anything, go ahead and I'll stop there for the site visit. I, I know I do have a question or two, so I can go on to that if Chris doesn't have anything.
I just wanted to mention that the tree that is existing there will not be disturbed. There's not going to be any excavation done around the tree other than replacing the curb, so that, that was something that came up at the site visit. And also for Mr. Gleason, and this is a little bit outside of the realm of the application, but Mr. Marshall noted that there were some invasive exotic plants on the site, particularly of Ewanos, a lattice, which is a plant that is considered to be invasive exotic, so he was going to recommend, I think, that the, the owners of the property look into removing those plants at some time, but that's not something that Greenfield Savings Bank has any control over.
We would be agreeable to that. Thank you. So, Doug, I let you continue.
Okay, well, the, we, Chris spoke about the, the question I had, which did, did concern the the, the Ewanos, also known as burning bush. I saw, you know, some of those had shown up in the Google Earth view right next to where the kiosk was to go, and I see those have been removed. There are obviously a, a number of other specimens of that, of that species on the property. And I know I've had a lot of personal experience with digging up volunteer burning bushes, and so I, I would you know, encourage you to, to, to think about taking those out. You know, on whatever timeline you can manage. And then, otherwise, I don't really have any comments, I think I was much more reassured by the site visit that, you know, this is a reasonable thing to do, so I appreciate us continuing the hearing and I appreciate having the site visit.
Tony?
Oh, I, I was just gonna say that we're happy to remove the burning bushes on a relatively short timeline. You know, in general, the removal of shrubs and bushes are sometimes frowned upon, so you know, your suggestion to remove them, we share the same opinion and we're happy to do it, we were just treading lightly with that. So we will get going on that in short order.
Very good, any other comments from the board? Janet?
So, at the last hearing, Doug had raised the question about the light being, the sign being very bright and prominent on that corner, and so I did drive by there at night, it is kind of very, a dark kind of corner, and so I, I thought the idea of maybe making it more opaque on a dimmer might be good and not have such a kind of blaring kind of white light, you know, it's kind of the beacon of New Market Center. Might be a, a good suggestion, just to kind of tone it down. So the sign is visible, but it's not, you know, kind of flashing at you or the, the thing that you see and nothing else around it, so I'm not sure how that would work. But, you know, maybe like making it less bright white and maybe not as bright would be a little more in tune with the, the vibe of the whole corner or the whole thing at night.
Yeah, so ma- maybe Rob, I mean, I know, I know you guys talk about a dimmer, but how does that, you know, in, in, in practice, how, how will that get resolved? That the lighting is, I mean wanted to be right?
Well sorry.
Well, let, let, let me call in Rob, if, if you can speak to that.
Yeah, so, you know, there might be ways we could do it that, you know, don't involve complicated controls, you know, maybe it's simply the the fixture, the, you know, the wattage, the, the, the color, all of that could be looked at first to see if there's something that wouldn't be as, as glaring, bright white. You know, but I think without any specific you know, measurement or guidance on that, it would really kind of be in the field. Turn it on and, and start making adjustments, probably with the fixture itself.
So, yeah, so, so the, the dimmer aspect is, is something that is, you know, acceptable to I'm not sure that would be a condition, but it sounds like it's, it's a, something that we're concerned about.
If I may, just, I, I do agree with Jan's comment that especially when you look at the photos from our Greenfield location with, you know, with the glare from the rain and everything else. I even, I agree that it would, you know, it would be obnoxious for lack of a, a better word in the, in the moment, and that's, I'll go back to my point that we want to be good neighbors and good community members, we don't want to stick out like a sore thumb and be a beacon, so to speak, and I, I thought it was a, a good potential answer when they, Heritage talked about adjusting the opaqueness of the vinyl to dim it down. But like what I was told today, LED panels, you do have the ability to adjust the lumens, to adjust the intensity. And by installing the dimmer switch, sort of, I think, if I understand what Rob said, sort of an in-the-field thing, we can work with it and make adjustments as necessary to find a, a level that's satisfactory.
Okay, so perhaps we can make that a condition that Rob more you know, eyeballs is, and, you know, works with Greenfield Savings Bank in terms of the, the intensity with regard to the dimmer switch.
So something like that Greenfield Savings Bank will work with the building commissioner to adjust the level of brightness of that canopy? Is that?
Yeah, so that, that's, it'd be, you know, acceptable, we can trust Rob that it's appropriate, but, yeah.
If I can just to, for, you know, full transparency, and I don't want to be thought that I intentionally left something out, but there's two com- two lighting components, there's the lexum panels that have our logos which are the outward. There is also some recessed downward lighting that would show on the vehicles at night and illuminate the area and that, and those, the downlighting is fixed, and that's for security and safety purposes.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. So it's more the you know, the horizontal panels that you have, so anybody on the board have other comments in that regard? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Any, many comments from the public? comments from the public? I don't, I see none. So back to the board, someone, I want to make a, a, a motion with one condition that we mentioned. Closing the public hearing. Uh, Doug?
Yeah, I'll move that we close the public hearing, that we accept the, the, uh, applicant's application with the additional consider, condition that they work with the building commissioner on adjusting the brightness of the canopy to, to where it's, uh, a sensitive element in the, in the, on the site.
Very good.
Are you going to find that this application meets the, uh, relevant criteria of section 11.24 of the zoning bylaw?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Chris. Johanna?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion amongst the board? Uh, I see none, so let's just do a roll call. Uh, Doug?
Hi.
And Tom?
I'm staying.
Uh, Janet?
Hi.
And Johanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So that's four zero with one ablation. So thank you, Jim and Tony.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you. So next we have, um, a zoning bylaw. It's a continuance, uh, for the, uh, changing of the official zoning map for map 14A parcel 33, uh, off of North Prospect Street, uh, to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map to extend the general business district to include a vacant parcel of land owned by the town of Amherst in the vicinity of North Pleasant Street, North Process, Prospect Street, Cow's Lane and Amity Street, uh, currently located in the general residence district RG. So, who, um, who do you have, uh, presenting this, Chris?
George Ryan is here. He was one of the proponents, so I think he intends to speak to you.
Okay, George, you, you, you have the floor.
All right, uh, Jack, thank you. Good evening to, uh, members of the board, um. You have in your packet, I don't know if you've had a chance to read it, but we've provided, um, a series of, uh, responses to the questions from the last meeting. Uh, we tried to cover all the questions that, uh, we felt we could provide, uh, reasonable answers to. Um, and I don't know if you, uh, want me to go through that. I think that is hopefully something that you have access to. What I wanted to-
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind if you did, George, because it's just a refresh. Uh, we've had so much going on the last month.
Uh, okay.
It would definitely help me personally, um.
Okay, and I know you only got it today, so, and I apologize, but, uh, just as you, so we too, Evan and I, then.
Yes.
But that's no excuse. Um, so yes, I'd be happy to go through it briefly. Um, I just want to, before I start through this, I want to, uh, just reinforce what I hope we made clear last time, that again, this is just the very, very first step of a long and complicated process. But without this first step, nothing else can happen. And so we would like something, Evan and I and others, uh, partic- principally the, the business owners in the downtown business district, the bid, would very much like to see something happen. Um, and it's driven really by a sense of the changes that, um, have occurred recently in the downtown are occurring right now and will be occurring in the next few years. So this is not so much about what is right now and certainly not about the past. It's about what is coming and will be coming. And it's part of that, uh, sense of a vision and a sense of a future coming out of COVID. And, and so that's what's driving this, um, is, is that the parking garage, uh, as we envision it, would be a key piece of, of that much larger, uh, vision. Um, and a much larger set of events that are happening around us. Um, I just sat down before the meeting and just started listing, um, you know, the, the downtown, particularly today, it's as much about experience. People come downtown for experience and not, uh, just, you know, for one particular thing. And so offering them, so I just made a list of, of, just briefly for a second, the kinds of things that right now are there and will be coming, um, in our downtown. And that a parking garage would be a place that, uh, would, people would know there would be a place where they could go. And then there were many, many other things they could then do on foot as pedestrians, et cetera. So you think of the, of the Jones Library that, that we hope soon will be renovated and expanded. The Amherst History Museum, a world-class independent cinema. Um, there's a music venue that is planning to open above the High Horse in October called The Drake. Obviously, very famous Emily Dickinson Museum at Homestead. Um, the, the Summer Common, uh, concerts that are taking place now in the South Common. Um, a plan for Van Schellert Performance Space that hopefully in the next year or two, um, would be built on the South Common. Um, Kendrick Park Playground is going to be opening soon and there's more developments planned in that area for that space. Um, the Amherst College Museums, the Pratt and the Mead. Um, outdoor dining was mentioned last time and the thought that, that going forward post-COVID, um, we would like to encourage that more, but to do that would require the loss of parking spaces. Um, but people coming downtown, um, Sweets or Park, and then really thinking far ahead, the, the fire station, uh, we dreamed someday, um, will no longer be a fire station and what might become of that, could that become also an experiential, uh, place where some safer performance space for, for theater or, or, um, or such. So, and then just the developments that are going to be happening in terms of housing, um, in the downtown. So there's a lot that has happened, is happening and will happen. And we see this as part of that, um, larger series of, 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 of happenings and a key part of that. Um, so that's, that's what's driving this. Um, so in the memo memorandum, um, we basically addressed the whole series of questions. First of all, um, why this lot, uh, as opposed to say the Amity Street Lot or the Boltwood Lot? And, um, I don't think there's anything terribly new here, but essentially we just go over the, the specifics. The Amity Street Lot is much too small. Um, and, uh, the neighboring lots are owned by other entities and, uh, would be prohibitively expensive, um, to acquire. And I don't think too many of us actually would like to see a parking garage right on Amity Street, opposite, um, uh, the, the, the library and so forth. So that was within, the Boltwood continues to be a, a, a place that I think some people think of, but, um, things have changed in terms of the physical location. Um, it still seems to be clear that it's not something that really can be built up on. Um, and so, and it's also not a site that anyone has expressed any interest, um, in actually developing. Whereas the, the, uh, North Prospect Street Lot is one that in fact people have expressed interest, um, in, in developing. We talked about the current situation, how many spaces, there are currently 72 spaces in the, in that lot that the town has. Um, we list, uh, the revenue that is provided. Um, and thank you for putting that up on the screen. And then I think something that, that everyone needs to think about is just the cost of maintenance. Uh, soon, a, a very substantial maintenance bill is going to come due and that will fall to the town. Um, there was an estimate done not too many years ago, um, where the town estimate or town share was over $300,000. And that's an ongoing expense that will always be there, um, in, into the future. Um, so when we think about, um, weighing costs, that's something that needs to be, um, considered in the overall calculation. Current usage of the lot is provided in the, uh, the next bit in terms of day and time and utilization. Okay? So if we just scroll down a bit, um, in terms of, um, use, again, pre-COVID, I can think of many times, uh, when I've come to use that lot on a Thursday, Friday or Saturday evening and it's been full. Um, obviously in the last year and a half, it's been a very different story. Um, but these are some figures from the parking study of 2019, pre-COVID. It gives you some sense, some sense of, of some of the utilization of that lot. The next, uh, section of the memorandum deals with the proposal itself and how it would go in terms of the process and where the public would be involved at, at every stage in this process. Um, and so it lays out, um, the various steps that they would be, um, a part of that. The next deals with the need, which I sort of introduced, uh, already at the very beginning, sort of my preamble here. Um, stresses some of the things that I think are important, uh, in terms of just the perception with, this is not driven by some sense that there's a, there's a parking crisis in Amherst that we need to address. There's a perception crisis or perception problem, and it's been true for a very, very long time. And this is something that we hear from constantly from business owners in the downtown, um, that, that people who come to their businesses, come to their restaurants, come to their events, um, always lament that it's a struggle for them. Um, yes, they do find parking and, and there is parking, but it, it's a struggle. And, and so often they will say, I'm just not coming back. Um, and so we know, you use North Hampton as an example. We all know that if you're going to an event, a music event, whatever it is or dinner, you know there's a place you can park. You know, you always are looking for that, that space that will appear and sometimes it doesn't, sometimes it doesn't. But you know, you can go to the, the municipal, uh, garage and your car is taken care of and then you can just walk around and do what you need to do. Um, and right now, Amherst really unfortunately doesn't seem to have that. So, um, and then the rest of the, of this paragraph really picks up on some of the themes that I have, I've already introduced that we're thinking about the future. This is not about the present. It's not about some har- parking crisis that we need to solve. It's about a perception and a future and a vision of what is coming, um, uh, to Amherst and that this would be a key part or could play a key part in that, in that, in that change and development. I also mentions, as I said, we mentioned last time, the idea of, of, of dining, um, on the street. Um, so, um, this is something that's become popular and, uh, people are using it. Um, but once we go back to just putting cars in their usual parking spaces, that goes away. So the attraction again, uh, part of the attraction of something like this is the cars are all in one place, um, out of sight in the back, um, and it, it opens up the street for all kinds of possibilities. Um, so that was the idea of why is there a need for this? Um, what about other options presented in the parking studies? Um, actually, many of those are excellent suggestions. Uh, we're certainly not opposed to them. I believe Sean Mangano has been given the task of seeing if he can help implement some of those. Uh, we think that they should be implemented, but they don't address, uh, what we feel is the, the most important part of this, which is the perception issue and the idea of what's coming in the future and the demand that we hope will become increasing for people coming for experiential, uh, events in our downtown, whether it's art or music or dining or just walking around in the, the green spaces that we're creating. Not just Kendrick Park, but in front of Town Hall, the North Common, and of course the South Common, um, and Sweets or Park. Is it premature to rezone? Does it, wouldn't it make sense to first have a, a project and then, and then rezone? That sounds emily reasonable, but as the, this paragraph tries to explain, um, there's just, no one is going to take the, the expense and the time, uh, that would be involved, um, to, to see, to come up with a, a, uh, proposal, a real concrete proposal that we could then ask the kinds of questions that were asked last week or last time, last meeting in terms of, you know, look and size and, 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 uh, traffic and entry, egress and, and so forth. Um, no one's going to do that, um, if the parcel remains RG. Okay, that's, that's the bottom line. Um, no one's going to take that time or expense and we don't want the town doing that. Um, the whole point behind this is that it would be a public-private partnership where the town expends basically nothing. Um, the risk is taken on by the developer and, um, the town provides the land and we maintains ownership of the land and, and writes up the RFP and has final say on, on, on what it will be. Um, and so this is, you know, and that, so that's our, the advantage to us. Um, and then expecting that somehow someone is going to, uh, um, do all this, um, without having some assurance that the zoning would allow it. I think it's just unrealistic. Um, and I don't think the town wants to take that expense on it. We certainly don't want that. Final future potential, how many spaces? Again, that's a guest estimate. Depends on the design, but we, as we said, we're, we're looking at something three stories at, at, that's it. Um, we're not interested in a five-story structure. That would not be anything that we would support and we would withdraw. And it's not something that would be in the RFP. So you're talking about a three-story garage, um, and given the slope of the site, um, it's very likely that, um, the first floor would, a good portion of it would be, would be, uh, underground. Um, so one guest estimate is over 120, say 123 spaces. But again, without an actual proposal, um, we can't say for certain. And I don't think, you're not going to get a proposal unless we take the first step, um, and rezone. Um, then the specific concerns are addressed in terms of traffic, height, um, and so forth. These are all good questions. We're not dismissing them. Um, but again, we're not bringing a concrete proposal to you because there isn't that. Um, but if you imagine, um, what might be the case with traffic, that, that's a very good question. And I think that has to really be looked at closely. Um, and the concerns of the neighbors and would have to be taken very seriously. Um, so this would be something the ZDA would be looking at. It would depend on the proposal. Um, height, um, as you said, uh, yes, the BG does allow up to five floors, but that's not what we would, we would support. That would not be in the RFP, um, and, uh, also the expensive, it would be prohibitive. Three floors is more than adequate, um, and would also, I think, be in keeping, um, with the, the, the homes across the street and with the, the buildings that are adjacent to it. Uh, other uses? Again, the question is, well, you know, um, w- w- what if the parking garage, you know, no proposals come or we go through the process and we don't like the proposals? And we say, okay, it stays, it stays a parking lot. Uh, well then now it's BG, it could be, and if anything could happen to it. And that, I understand that concern, um, but first of all, remind everyone that it belongs, the land is still in the town's possession and whatever would happen there could only happen with the town's permission and ultimately with the permission of the town council. But we also, was raised the notion of what's called contract zoning. And we looked into that and I think in the next part of the, uh, the next paragraph, I believe, um, Evan addressed that or somewhere he addresses that. Um, maybe it comes a little bit later, but we looked into contract zoning. It is legal in Massachusetts. It has been used. Um, and, um, yeah, there it is near the end. Yeah, sorry. So it's certainly something that we would support. We would be perfectly happy to include that as part of the, of the zoning bylaw. Um, apparently the Lowe's in Hadley was done under some form of contract zoning. And, um, it's, uh, I think Evan here mentions one case in particular, so it is perfectly, uh, legal. It has to obviously address something that's, some common good, um, in, in the, in the language. It has to be providing for something that is, that is truly beneficial to, to the community as a whole, which we think this would be. Um, but we would certainly be open to that. So it would be explicit in the language that this could only be, uh, used as, for the purpose of creating a garage and that would be it. Um, and so we'd obviously have to do some more homework there, but, but that is a, a very real possibility and one that we would support. Um, then up above, we go back up, we just, we look briefly at traffic, height, other uses. Um, the viability impacts the CDS. Um, uh, basically none, um, they would still have their lot. Um, again, i- if this ever, if we did resound it and, and people did come forward and did take the time with their lawyers and conversation and doing, uh, their due diligence, I assume they would have conversations with CBS and they might be able to work out something um, more than just an overhang. I mean, one suggestion is just an overhang over the CBS, uh, uh, spaces. But CBS would keep their lot, um, unless they chose to, to, in, to enter into some agreement that they, they would see as advantageous to them, but they may very well not. So the impact on them would, would not be any, as far as we could see. An impact to other businesses, again, is described here, um, they have their own parking. Um, and again, um, maybe they would work something out or maybe they would just keep the parking they have. Um, but it seems the impact on them, immediate businesses would be, but again, not be significant. And the impact on all the other businesses in the downtown, um, would be, uh, very positive. Um, that's something we hear a lot. Um, and then again, as we said, is there any way to guarantee? And that's, that's kind of a jump ahead there, but that deals with the, uh, the issue of, uh, what couldn't it then become, you know, once it's resounded, it could become anything. Um, and that paragraph attempts to address that and contract zoning is part of that. So, uh, that's in sum what, uh, my colleague put together for you. Um, hopefully it gives you some clearer sense of what, um, we are hoping to accomplish long-term and how this is just the first step. And, um, again, I just wanted to begin with that preamble of what drives this is, is a sense of, of a future excitement. What's happening in our downtown and what's going to be happening in our community over the next few years. And, um, uh, it's, we want it not to cost the town. It's not something where the town would be spending any money. And the, you know, the, the phrase is a win-win, um, for the business community, um, which would be taking on the risk and the town, which would be providing a space that withdraw people, they would know without- Without, they, they have a place they can come and, and then they can go off and do whatever they want to do. And as you can see, there are many, many, many things now and even more to come that you can do in our downtown.
Thank you, George. Uh, I'm not sure. I've, I've, I've heard you give such a presentation and all your. Weeks and months of on the town council. It was very nice. Thank you. Uh, very clear.
Um. Well, thanks to Evan. Evan is, uh, he's can't, he's at a wedding. That young man, I don't know. He just, he needs to go to less weddings. I don't understand. Uh, he was out yesterday getting a tux. Um, he, I can't fit into mine. I couldn't make him mine. Anyway, he did the lion's share here. Um, uh, but thank you.
I'm sure. Um, so, so we need to be clear that we're not, you know, talking about a parking garage, but we're talking about rezoning. Uh, for this particular, uh, hearing. Uh, but just being transparent that, you know, a parking garage. Proposal would be in, you know, in the offing there. Uh, so I, before I open up the board, I, I have a, a few questions that maybe Chris. Um. Um. Or Rob can, can help me with, but, uh, I did, I saw the graphic that the, the parking revenue was decreasing from two thousand fifteen. Um, it was early on and, and, and George's slides, but, um.
I can try and bring that back up if you give me a second.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I just, you know, COVID, we know, you know, last year. Was, was low, but it just seemed. I was curious what, what would. He.
This one.
There you go. Yeah. So, yeah, eighteen, nineteen, I, I'm wondering what the town's perspective on. On that decrease from, uh, you know, subsequent to fiscal year seventeen. Uh, you know, there was like, that's a big drop. I just, I'm just wondering. Someone can give some perspective on that. Chris?
I don't know anything about that. I'm sorry. I can't, uh, I don't have any information to share. Perhaps Rob does.
I, I do not either.
Okay. That's fine. Um, and then also just to get some, uh, more history perspective. Uh, again, because this is, uh, you know, prior to every member on the board. Uh, you know, joining, we had Boltwood. Uh, now I'm trying to understand why Boltwood. Uh. Parking end up being, you know, subterranean, but no, no stories above. Ground floor. Can we get some perspective on that?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, Chris.
I was around and, um, so there was a lot of objection from the residents of Clark House and Ann Will and Apartments. About having a structure in the middle of that open space. People seem to really like the idea of having the open space, even though there were cars there. And, um, so that was the primary objection. And there was also an architect who was involved. His name I can't remember, but he spoke very passionately about maintaining, um, the open space there and not filling it up with a building. Um, so even though a second story was, or a third, a third floor was planned initially. Um, it was determined that that wouldn't happen at the time that the garage was built, but. Um, we did hear that the garage was designed to accommodate another story. If the town were to decide to put one there, um, I don't think there would be that many spaces that would be. Um, gleaned by doing that. I'm thinking around eighty or ninety, not exactly sure. Rob may have a better idea. Um, and I think if we were deciding to pursue that as a possibility, there would need to be some studies done. About whether the, um, structure, you know, meets today's code, because this was designed back in the nineties. So Rob probably has, uh, more information about that.
Okay, I, I just, yeah, I, I'm curious about that because I, that, um. I always thought that was a missed opportunity for the town to, to make that a larger, uh, structure, but. Um, and then I totally agree with, with George, uh, with, you know, going to North Hampton. You can like hunt and peck for a parking space, but you know, you always have that parking garage that you can go to. And it would be wonderful, you know, have that same feeling, comfort level. Um, you know, given whatever time constraints you have, but you know, you're going to find a parking place. Uh, you know, within a, within a parking garage. But again, that's, we're not talking about a parking garage. We're talking about a zoning change, but I just. Wanted to, to, to say that. And then, uh, Chris, I'm wondering in terms of a, a condition, can we, can we limit this to? Um, a three-story versus a five-story? You know, with regard to the approval of this, uh, in, you know, putting in. Some sort of, um. You know, kind of overreaching a little bit, but.
You, you can make the recommendation, the planning board can make that recommendation if the planning board decides to. Um, um, recommend approval of this rezoning. That would be, that could be part of your recommendation. Um.
Yeah.
Right, but when the RFP goes out, um, whoever is in charge of that can also make that a stipulation in the RFP that the town. Wants, uh, no more than three stories here. So that would be something that. The staff would put together and the town manager would, um, release that as an RFP for the town.
Okay, uh, that's all I had. So I, um, opening up, I see Doug.
Yeah, I had a couple of, uh, I guess, a couple of questions. One is, um. I, I guess at this point, we're just doing a rec- I mean, we're, we're going to make a recommendation to council. And then council is going to decide whatever it decides. Um, so my first question is, what was the vote of town council? To refer this to us? How strong was the support on the council? To, to, to ref- to, to refer this, this proposal to us? And the second question I had was if this proposal is, is, uh, rejected, I guess. Um, isn't there maybe a two-year period during which it can't come back? So if we kill, if we contribute to killing this, uh, are we in fact killing it definitely for two years?
I think that the rule is that if the planning board, um, puts it forward again, then it can come back. But, um, it has to be, the recommendation has to come from the planning board to bring it back. That's my understanding.
Thank you. Uh, George, you have your hand up, and then Janet.
My recollection, and it's rusty, so maybe we, I should not say anything, but my recollection is the vote was eight to five. It was, it was not like a unanimous or anything like that. There were certainly were, uh, some, uh, objections. But my recollection was eight to five, but I should, I have to check. Um, I'd like to think it was higher than that, but I think it was eight to five.
So, so, uh, what was it, George, you think?
Well, I, I'm, I'm nervous here. Um, I do know it was not, it was not unanimous. I know that.
Okay.
Um, and, um, so maybe I should just say, I'll, I should say to Doug, I'll just find out and get that.
Okay.
I will tell you, um, that's the safest.
Thank you. Uh, Janet?
So, um, my concern, I have a few concerns here. One of them is that. A zoning change with very little information. And so instead of planning first and gathering information. And then zoning, we're being asked to zone without information or planning. And so, um. It just seems at a minimum to get, to get some drawings, some diagrams to show us the capacity of each of the parking lots. Um, to sort of compare them and to see how many spaces they could have, given the setbacks and the different zoning. Um, things, I mean, you were, it seems like you've already have some by an architect. And I would hope that you would share that with us so we could at least see, you know, you're going to have two twenty-foot setbacks. Um, on the north and south side because it debuts RG, you're going to have a ten-foot setback at the rear. Um, I don't think you're probably going to build right onto the street, onto North Prospect Street. And so. To me, it looks like those option, the size of the garage can get smaller and smaller. Um, and you're hoping for like a hundred percent lot coverage. Um, it sounds like no landscaping. It's just, you know, a brick there. Um, so I would like to see, you know, what's possible and what, how many spaces are possible. Um. I was looking at the, the study from nineteen ninety that compared the Amherst parking facility study from nineteen ninety. And they had drawings of the possibilities on all three town lots. Um, they found two hundred and forty spots on the CVS lot, but it was a CVS plus the town lot. And that seemed sort of like a threshold number, and even at that number, you know, they were barely cut, making money. Um, and there were kind of different parts of the financial analysis. And of course, the numbers are different now because thirty years have gone by. They might be worse because everything's more expensive and our parking rates aren't very high. They thought that basically, um. You know, monthly, monthly parking people were the best way, you know, people who rented by the month would be the best way to make money. So I would, I would hope that we would see some diagrams on each of the lots. I would like to see a diagram combining Amity Street and the Bank of America lot, because that's a lot of space. And in terms of like the look of the parking garage on Amity Street, I mean, it, you know, I think, you know, there was an original presentation. Um, in this parking study, they were talking about doing a line of shops in the front to kind of fill out the street. Um, like retail shops and making that attractive. And throughout the parking study. Every lot that they were looking at, they were looking at making it attractive and appealing and things like that. And so. I would love, and I don't think it's super expensive because I know, I mean, yesterday at the site, I asked Chris Brestrop. Can, can you do that? Can you do those? Because we've seen the planning department do it. We've seen Doug do it. And I, you know, the response was that there's just, planning department has no time, but. It seems as a proponent and you have an architect that that wouldn't be hard to do. Um, also, this is a public hearing and the public, it's, I mean, if I feel like I have very little information, I'm sure people paying attention to this feel the same way. Um, so, you know, diagrams to illustrate the capacity of each lot. Um, and the setbacks, because I think you might wind up with a much smaller, um, parking garage, given the twenty-foot setbacks. Um, because it's BG adjoining RG. Um, the other question I have, I have a, a lot of questions, but one of them is, it's like. Has anyone gone to the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Committee? There are people on that committee who have expertise in traffic and parking. And I don't think it's a small thing to have all the traffic coming in and out off of North Prospect Street. Um, I'm not sure it's going to be obvious to people, but I, I know that's a lot of impact. And I was wondering if the TAC. With all their experience, some feedback from them. I think I would like to have that before I make a recommendation. Um, and then, I mean, do you, I mean, do you want to respond to that while I, um?
Well, respond to which? All of the questions or the track, or which one do you want me to start with?
Well, the TAC is the easy one, but the diagrams are the, I think, really important.
Well, let's start with the diagrams. Uh, we don't have an architect. Um, we don't have a plan. Um, as I've said over and over again, um, no one is going to do this. The town's not going to do it. No architect, no, no, a private entity is going to do this if it remains RG. Uh, and I've just explained in detail how we have protections here, so that if, if this does not work. Then it goes back to being what it's, and it goes, also goes back to us spending another three hundred thousand or four hundred, whatever it is, uh, to patch it up. Um, which seems to be a wind loss in the shuffle. So the risk and the cost falls on the shoulders of the private entity. And they will only do this if they see that it makes sense. I, I'm not so sure they're about making money. Obviously, they want to break even. But the, the driving force here from the bid and from those who probably would take the, the risk would be, what I've described from the beginning. Is a desire to create a, a place that people want to come to. It's not about making yourself rich on a parking garage. Um, you do want to make break even, but I don't think they, that's not the concern. So, um, yes, it would be nice to have all kinds of things like this, but the planning department can't provide it. Um, I can't provide it. Um, what I'm asking the planning board to consider is whether they think this is, makes sense in the big picture. And given appropriate protections, which I think are here, um, the zoning really carries very, really no risk at all. Um, but then allows and encourages private park entities to spend the time and money. To come forward then, and then all the questions you ask, the tack and all the rest of it comes into play. And it could be, as it sometimes is, you go through all of this, you spend all your money, you do it right, and it, it just doesn't work. And if that happens, that's what happens. But at this stage, to demand all that. Would basically mean that it stays what it is. It stays as a, of a kind of dilapidated and poorly lit. Uh, parking, uh, uh, space, parking lot. And, uh, we'll shell out another three hundred thousand in, in a year or two to, to patch it up. And in twenty years, we'll do it again and so on and so forth. So.
Am I going to give you a pause, Janet? Just, but I just, I want to make sure we don't put the cart in front of the horse. We're really just talking about zoning change and as George related, there's so much more that has to happen. For, for this, for this, for this concept. So I would like to, uh, see if anybody else wants to speak. Uh, on the planning board and then Janet, you can, uh, uh, I would like you to come in after that, but. Uh, I just want to make sure that we get everybody, uh, opinion, uh, Doug?
Yeah, I guess, um. I think I, I'm not sure I agree with George about the fact that the town couldn't do some of the work that is needed. To develop a vision for this area. Um, and so I guess my question for George and, and Evan is. Why did you put this forward as a straight zoning change as opposed to a motion that directs the town manager? To have planning staff spend some time of their own, you know, of, of the staff we're already paying. Uh, just put this, this concept on, on a higher priority in terms of their task list. So that, you know, we might have some conceptual ideas for what you would do. Before we talk about the rezoning. And I think the, the biggest difficulty I have is that this, it just seems like a very odd way to have this show up with us. Uh, without, you know, first of all, you're, you're, you're here by yourself, you know, where's the bid? Um, you know, have you built consensus for this? Um, you know, and, um. So, you know, it just, it's, it's just weird. And it's so, it, we're accustomed to having the planning's staff. Kind of come to us with some work done for consideration and comment. And, and you're, you're kind of out here coming in from left field. And, uh, so it's just a little bit kind of hard to wrap your head around.
George, you want to respond?
Yeah, no, I, I hear that. And maybe that will be the decision of the planning board. They simply want, uh, more information. And I can't give it to you right now, and I can't speak for the planning department. I think that. Um, the approach is, is obviously different than what you're used to. Um, it's driven largely by, um, the, the business community, and I apologize, they're not here. Uh, the bid executive director was here, um, but she's just gone. So, um, she could speak, uh, much more eloquently and forcefully than I can about, uh, the business community interest, but, um. Yeah, I think that, uh, the, the planning department is already up to their eyeballs in, in, in work and projects. And I think the feeling of Evan and myself was this is something that, um, we knew there was interest in the private sector. To do this before COVID. And our understanding is there still is interest, but no one's going to touch it if the zoning stays RG. So if the planning board is willing to do something a little bit different and take that, um, I consider really minimal risk. That kind of work will be done, not by our planning staff, but yes, we do pay. Um, and, uh, but probably not enough, but we do pay them. And, uh, they work very hard and they are, as you know, uh, they're obviously up to their, right? So, um, it, it would basically go on the back burner. Um, and Paul has got five thousand things to do. It would go on the back burner. And I think if that's what the planning board is comfortable with, then that's what will happen, then it will go on the back burner. And it will stay what it is, um, probably for a very, very long time. Um, so I also hear that I would like to have, uh, the bid executive director here. I'd like to have a few more members from the business community here. Um, but, uh, tonight they're not here, so I can't, I can't answer that. But, uh, yes, the approach is probably not what is usual, and, uh, we're asking you to consider it. And think about it in terms of, of the, the broader vision of what's happening in Amherst and, and is going to be happening. Um. But in the end, we will do, obviously. But in the end, we will do, obviously, well, we will follow your guidance.
Great. Thank, thank you, Doug. Good comments. Uh, George, thank you for the response. Uh, Janet?
So, so I appreciate, I appreciate the pitch and I, I, I'm not against the idea. What I'm hoping for is some information that we regularly get, um, which is just some sketches of the diff, you know, like the comparison between the three lots. It's not super expensive. It's not super hard to do, but somebody has to do it. And I do agree that the planning department is beyond stretched out. So when I read your, um, you know, supplemental thing, it said that there is a preliminary analysis by a potential bidder working with an architect with experience in parking garages and did show that the space could support a parking garage if a hundred percent coverage was allowed. And if you look at the nineteen ninety report, they do a super extensive drawings for this lot, including the CVS lot, but they also just did sort of, I don't know, I'm not using the right word, but they just, they looked at the other two lots and they drew around them. And I don't think it's particularly expensive, but it's very, very useful to see what can be done. And I would love to see even just a basic schematic of what can be done. We, we, obviously someone has already done it. And did they get the setback? So what's the consequence of the zoning of BG? And so I would love to get that information, which is the information we normally do before we make a recommendation to rezone something, which is obviously a very big deal. The other thing is, there is some deal, there are some bidders, um, the bid is interested. So I would love to have them come here and make the proposals and saying, this is our vision. Here's some drawings. Here's why we picked this. Here's what's possible. It's interesting to me that the Bank of America lot sits, you know, it's, it's a big lot. They only use it during banking hours and they given permission for, um, Amherst Cinema people to use at night. You know, it seems very possible to me that that would be a, a site for a parking garage combined with the town lot. And I think, you know, you're, you're making a propos, very specific proposal and we're a planning board and we sort of sit back more and collect information and sort of are looking at the bigger picture. And so that would help me to see the bigger picture and know more, some more detail. Um, I understand your urgency, but I, I think you're looking for a recommendation and, and we, 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 I need more information before going forward. Um, I did, so that's one thing. And so I don't, I don't think what I'm asking for is very expensive. It's what we normally see. Um, if there's a bidder and an architect, they'll understand that they could provide that pretty quickly. Um, especially if they have experience with garages too. Um, the other, the other thing, um, but I do, would like to go to the TAC and get their input or even have someone from the TAC invited to look at this. Um, the other issue I see is, um, you know, going over three stories. And I think I, I sent an email to Chris is that I think that in the use table, one idea is to say that, you know, to, to cha, to add a sentence to the use table, basically saying that no public or par, private parking garage shall exceed three stories or thirty-five feet in any zoning district, no waivers or exceptions shall be allowed. And that would just put the kibosh on, you know, going over, you know, two, three stories for the parking garage. It doesn't put the corrupt kibosh on five, ten years down the road. Maybe the lot isn't turned into a parking garage. The town would like some money. It has a valuable lot now, zone BG. And then they could sell it for, you know, whatever, you know, five stories, something. And I think that's a great concern of the neighbors. And, you know, there's no, how do you, you know, that concern I think has to be addressed and not by saying it's not going to be in the RFP. But once the zoning is there, it's there. And it can be, you know, the town could say, let's sell the lot for something, you know, building, it might be, you know, some of the lots in town are worth millions of dollars now. And suddenly this is a very valuable asset and people on North Prospect Street are going to be looking at a five story something. And so I don't think it's, I think we have to look at the long-term consequences too and, and discuss those also.
Thank you, Janet. Um, without any other hands on the planning board, let's open it up to public. And I see two hands raised. Pam, excuse me, Harry Pelts? And then Pam Rooney, oh, there's a third, uh, uh, Ro, Ronnie Parker, I'm not, I'm sure I'm saying that correctly. And then Jennifer Tob, Kathy Shane, and then, uh, Dorothy Pam. So we have, and then Susanna Musbrat. So we, we have, uh, over half dozen. Um, and, uh, I will watch the, the three minute timer here, getting set up here, but please, Harry, uh, you will be first. You know, state your, your, oh, you, you've got to go on there, uh. Thank you. So, uh, first be Harry, you know, just state your name and address. And, uh, yeah, three minutes.
Harry is muted.
Yep, Harry, can you unmute?
New button, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
My name's Harry Pelts. I live at thirty-two North Prospect Street in Amherst. And I attended a community, uh, commission meeting a few weeks ago when this was adjourned, this, this particular meeting, uh, tonight was adjourned at that time, the planning board told me. And there were a number of people there. And it seems to me the, the, the cart is being put before the horse. And we don't know what the horse is going to be once it comes in. But let me be, use my three minutes productively. I believe that, uh, Mr. Ryan indicated there'd be a uh, not that many more spaces created by, uh, this endeavor. But I would like to point out that if you look at the maps, the only access to this lot is off of North Prospect Street. And as Ms. McGowan indicated, the neighbors and the people, and there are about ten or twelve of us who were present at the commission meeting a few weeks ago, are very concerned about that. North Prospect Street is immediately to the west of this. It is the only access to that lot from any direction. It is a two-lane road. One lane is dedicated during the UMass school year to residents who live on that street. And it, uh, is a one-way street headed southbound from, it has to be entered from, uh, the north to, to come down. How you're going to get access to any structure there is going to be very, very difficult. Create a traffic problem that is going to be enormous. And immediately to the west on the other side of the street where I live along with, uh, my neighbors is a historic district, a designated historic district. And it, it's not going to, uh, do anything for the property values or for the, uh, ambiance in that area. You indicated that this, uh, project may not be profitable and, and break even because only, uh, if it break even, then it benefits the town. But what private entrepreneur is going to want to invest money in building a parking lot that only breaks even? And how do, eh, we even have that there? The commission that I was before kept saying, oh, we're not going to have a parking lot, that we're just going to do this to, to explore things. I just cannot tell you. I made a, um, highway department request for them to, uh, look into the dangerous condition of exiting driveways on North Prospect Street now. Headed southbound out of the residences, when the traffic coming from UMass comes down there at excessive speeds and the view is blocked headed northbound of making some accommodation. That request was made nearly six months ago, and I have yet to get a report which was supposedly being written three months ago. I believe this is a very poorly conceived way to, uh, approach things. You already have studies from nineteen ninety. It's time for more studies. I have been here for a number of years, only residing physically here, but I've been in this area. And that lot is not used that much at all. And if you can go by on almost any day, and I know recently uh, only a few, seven cars or so are there, maybe because of COVID. But it has never been an overused lot. You can see the percentages that Mr. Ryan presented in his, uh, presentation, which were very, very, and I'm sorry, my time is out, but I am very, very
Yeah.
opposed to this. I believe my fellow, uh, neighbors are.
Yeah, you know, Harry, you, you can ask for more time, uh, but, but you, you, you're, you're over three minutes, but i- if, do you want another minute or are you good? He's good. Okay. Okay, so, um, so we'll go on to Pam. Pam Rooney, state your, uh, name and address. Thank you.
Hi Pam Rooney. I do appreciate being allowed to speak. I, I hope that at some point uh, the board will actually listen to the folks that show up and speak about concerns. We really just want a healthy, vibrant and, and exciting town center. All of this is said in that light. I heard a couple of things that I strongly agree with, and that is let's plan first and then let's zone. Let's not put the cart before the horse and change the zoning uh, in the hopes that maybe something can work, uh, in the future. I think if a, the, the, the request for diagrams for all of the different parking areas should be part of this conversation before the planning board takes a vote to recommend this, this, uh, zoning change. Zoning changes are a big deal. And I think you all have a very strong responsibility for having the facts in front of you before you just, I will say cavalierly, rezone something. Let's get some diagrams. Let's see what the capacities of the different sites are. People can do this. I, I see three planet, uh, three, uh, architects on the planning board. And they themselves could do some simple diagrams. The planning staff we know is absolutely maxed out and is trying very hard to push things through the system. So let's see some diagrams. Let's see if it makes sense. There are a number of unanswered questions, even though this is supposedly just to rezone. We all know that the intent to rezone is to, uh, encourage construction development behind CVS. Um, who would own the garage? Who, who would reap the benefits of it? Would the town have to purchase, for instance, uh, the easement or the accessway between CVS and the, the Saigon building? Um, and, and also I, I don't fully believe that once the site is rezoned to BG that there could be any restriction in place on the height of a building. Because in fact, the dimensional table would allow for more than three stories. So I disagree that, that, oh, we can deal with that later. So I think the planning board has a really big responsibility in front of them to have the facts in order before you recommend a rezoning change. BG is definitely not even the right zone. Uh, the, the BG district backs up, uh, would back up immediately against a, an RG neighborhood. And in fact, it's really imperative that there be a buffer. So before you do anything, look at the facts. Compare the, the options, compare the coming, uh, district, the various zoning districts that might apply. Don't just, don't just please move ahead and, and push through something that isn't completely thought through. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, so next we have, uh, is it, I, I hope I pronounce this, uh, correctly, Ronnie Parker?
Yes, this is Ronnie Parker.
Okay, state your name and address. Yeah.
Ronnie Parker, new to the neighborhood, soon to be resident of twenty-four North Prospect. Um, I'm so grateful to my neighbors who've spoken because a lot of what I feel has been expressed. But I will, and I've written to Mr. Ryan, not realizing he was the advocate for this, um, arguing for all the reasons why it shouldn't happen. Um, in any event, uh, I'd like to address his question of his, um, focus on how this is really about Amherst of the future. Because it is about Amherst of the future. Is Amherst of the future going to be bringing in or trying desperately to bring in hundreds more cars? What are we going to do about making it a sustainable place with more trees, more bicycle traffic? And of course, access to cars. Nobody's saying no. Are there any EV charges on these proposed parking lots? Um, I feel like if we're going to go this route, we really need to think about the future in a more comprehensive way. And I would say to Mr. Ryan that it's not a this or nothing. You know, sit down and consult with us. And I think you'll find that there are lots of options. Not just the technical options that others have alluded to that the planning people will come up with. But there's a lot of opportunity for vision among the people who live there. So I think there are other options. So we're really rushing into this. I would urge the planning board not to, to put off whatever decision you're going to make about this, uh, for that reason. Um, I also, I'm a business owner, so I'm not opposed to economic development. But let's not fool ourselves about business. Business, private sector does not get into things where they don't make money. That's, I mean, no private sector is going to step in and do things for Amherst's good alone. Um, and then I had one other comment, and this has to do with the sta, condition of the road. Um, since I do also work in, um, industry where construction happens, I can tell you that if the Department of, um, the Transportation Office in Massachusetts probably will not allow that road to be used in the ways we're talking about. Even for construction vehicles that are projected to be there as a site for the building of, of the library. It is a tiny road. It is a weak, weak road. It doesn't have the structure underneath to support the kinds of traffic we're talking about. So I think that we do need a lot more research, uh, to undertake this. And thank you for letting me speak. And I really look forward to meeting these neighbors who have spoken up today in person.
Thank you, Ronnie. Um, so we have Jennifer, then Kathy, then Dorothy and Susanna. So, uh, uh, Jennifer, Bob, please, uh, state your name and address.
Um, yes, my name is Jennifer Tow that two fifty-nine Lincoln Avenue. And I actually wrote something because I wanted to be sure I got it into the three minutes. So, um, when the town establishes zoning, it determined that there would be at least a certain number of feet or blocks, which would serve as a buffer between the general business district and the general residence neighborhoods. And that buffer is the business limited district. So it would be one thing to rezone the town's portion of the parking lot behind CVS from its current RG designation to business limited. But to skip over the BL altogether and rezone to BG denies North Prospect Street, as well as some other streets that feed into it. It just denies them any buffer between it and the business general dist, district. Um, and among the protections that the BL designation provides to the adjacent residential neighborhoods is that the buildings in the BL will not exceed three stories, while in the BG they could be five stories. And again, from the beginning of zoning, it seems up until this moment, or maybe it was just four to six weeks ago, we even heard that there was even an idea that this rezoning would happen. Or was it even being thought of happening? Um, the town planners had agreed that five-story buildings were really not appropriate next door, you know, to single-family and multi-unit dwellings, which is what's in the adjacent, uh, RG neighborhood. Um, and I, I kind of feel confident that none of the planning board members would also, you know, appreciate a five-story building going up across the street from them or, or next door. And the rush to rezone the CVS lot from RG to BG seems especially confounding, like others have said before me, since it's not at all clear that it's even feasible to build a parking structure and the location being discussed. Yet once the town's parcels behind CVS are rezoned from RG to BG, the universe of what can be built on the east side of North Pleasant vastly increases. And I, I could live with this, you know, that there was some sort of, could be a guarantee of that anything built there wouldn't be more than three stories and that it would be, you know, sort of screened with trees. But I, what I'm hearing tonight is when the chair says that we're just talking about rezoning, that there couldn't be any sort of, what do they call it? Contract zoning or any kind of rider attached. It would just be rezone to BG, that there couldn't be anything specified, that it would only be a three-story parking structure. So, you know, again, as people have said, I can just imagine two or three or more years down the road when it's, the parcel's been rezoned to, to BG and then there, you know, it may turn out a parking structure is not feasible there for all the other reasons that others have discussed. So that there's an application for a five-story apartment building or office building in that location. And if the residents say, well, in twenty- and if the residents say, well, in 2021, you know, our councilman promised us that that structure would never be built there, I can't imagine that, that argument would really get us very far with the future planning board. So I echo what's already been offered in public comments of, you know, please don't skip over BL and, and rezone from RG to BG. And of course, I would ask if, you know, rezoning not be done before the feasibility study has happened to determine if the purpose for which you'd result be rezoning, supposedly the parking structure, is even and I still don't understand why there couldn't be a feasibility study before the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you Jennifer. Uh, Kathy, and then Dorothy and Susanna. So Kathy, Shane, uh, state your name and address again.
Hi, I'm Kathy Shane. I live at 519 Montague Road, and, um, I'm speaking as a resident. For those of you who do or don't know Montague Road, that's Route 63 going north, and we're almost at the north end. So we frequently drive downtown. Um, and experience the various lots. So I, I actually wrote up comments and sent them. I sent them to you, Chris, but I didn't get them be- before this meeting, so you can have other, other comments that I did in writing. And I just wanted to make some points that haven't been already made. In addition to the question of why BG, why not BL? We could think of why not BN, because BN at least allows you some di- dimensional waivers, so some of the issues are, are lot coverage, um, but something that's a buffer zone. I worry that this looks like spot zoning to me. You either are planning to do the whole street this way. Spot zoning's not legal in Massachusetts, where you just pick a little piece out, so the lot next to it is still zoned the way it's zoned, and this little, so the CBS lot, so we're cascading along all of it, so I think we should avoid doing something that's illegal. This is a loss of 70 spaces. George talked about in addition. Yes, we might yet need to do repair. Sounds like we'll need to do repair of the roads. Uh, we don't have any linkage fees for developers. These are legal, and I gave you a citation of some towns that do it. When a development goes up, they contribute to a parking fund, for example, to help build a garage. And we could put those on the books. And I just, um, the whole issue of scale is a real one, that people have already asked about, but getting some sense of what, what could you build on two-thirds of an acre? When the 1990 study was done, they were assuming an acre. And they came up with 240 spaces. So I'm not really sure you could get 190 out of it, and they were going, uh, an underground layer, and then a rooftop layer, so staying within. They, they weren't rezoning for that lot, by the way. They were designing it. And just so people don't get excited about the idea of the Northampton lot, that's 400 spaces. It's really big. So just to be able to think about it, the access to this is horrible now. And that's one of the reasons it's less used. The signage is really bad. You don't even know there's a lot back there. But you go through that tiny ara alleyway, if you're coming in the middle of town, or you have to know to go way up north and and come back in, it's hard to get to, it's hard to leave. So the preferred lot is the North Commons parking lot. They're full all the time. And you can look, I can send you the revenues. That's the big money winner. It's just hard to get to. So I think that's all I want to say now, but the one other concern I have, when publicly, there've been some statements, and I think it was the BID, who made this, that one of the developers' interests is potential long-term lease to the tenants. We might not have very many public spaces if we give away this land. The underground garage is already long-term lea- so you might, we might really lose control. So I think some design concerns. Do we really have public spaces? What's the price to park there? If we no longer control it, are big ones. And I'll stop. Thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Uh, Dorothy, and then Susanna. Dorothy, state your name and address.
Hi, Dorothy Pam, 229 Amity Street. And again, I'm speaking as a private person, not as a town counselor. I do agree with, uh, George and Evan on the question of certainty of being able to park. Um, and that's why the idea of garage has some attraction. But, um, I think that, uh, there've been so many good comments made, both by planning board members and the public as to the various problems with this particular lot. I don't think this is the place to do it. Uh, I am definitely in favor of having, um, a detailed study of the Boltwood lot and the Amity lot, uh, as, uh, combining the Bank of America with the town lot. What's wrong with this particular spot is it is, um, not visible. Uh, the access is very difficult. And, um, it, it just, it just won't work. I mean, the idea of certainty of parking means you know where the garage is, you know how to get there, you can get in and you can get out. And that there would be spaces, always be some spaces available for people. So that the whole long-term parking thing is not really a good idea. So I, um, I second some of the ideas that, uh, George brought up. Uh, but I do not think that the North Prospect block, now that I have had a chance to learn more about the size and what could be built there, and, um, have thought about the access more, I don't think this will be the place that will give us the certainty, the assurance, yes, I'll be able to find a place to park. So I, I do hope that you will set some kind of study going to look at other areas for this. Thank you.
Thank you Dorothy. Um, uh, Susanna, state your name and address. Chris, do you want to speak now?
Oh. Chris is on mute.
I just, I said Susanna just unmuted herself, so I think she'll be able to speak now, and then I would like to speak after that.
Very good. Thank you. Susanna, um, state your name and address.
Susanna Musfret, 38 North Prospect Street. I, uh, wrote to you on July 2nd with many concerns about this proposal to rezone for a parking garage, and it was in your packet for the July 7th meeting. I really hope you will reread my, um, memo before you make your recommendation. I don't want to take up time tonight by repeating my concerns. But as planners, certainly you understand the importance of careful planning before any zoning changes are promulgated. So I would second what other speakers have said about the importance of doing that kind of analysis, comparing all the various lots. Um, I, I have a point of clarification I'd like. When, George, when you talk about, uh, three levels of parking, and Evan's memo mentions the top level is a, an open-air parking deck. Is that a fourth level of parking, or a third level? That's a fourth? Third? Well, then the math just doesn't add up, I don't think. I don't think you can get um, that many spaces on each level. Um, but I also feel that it's really important for the people in the town to know more about how this garage would be operated before, um, before this all takes place, because we have rights under the charter to try to oppose things if we understand what they are, but we can't do that by just going to the ZBA at the end. And I don't think that the traffic analysis should wait until after the, uh, potential partner has gone to all the trouble and expense of designing the garage and whatever. The traffic analysis isn't, is something that should be done at the beginning before you decide you want to do this. And it is really a problem on our street. If you end up having to take away all the street parking on Coles Lane and North Prospect to make this garage work, you're not going to gain very much in the way of spaces. So that has to happen first. I don't think that's really the, the work of the private partner, but if it is, it still needs to happen before this rezoning is, is undertaken. I think we need to understand how the revenue would be apportioned. Is it all going to go to the private partner? We definitely want to understand whether this garage is for short, short-term parking for visitors to town, as your memo kind of implies, or whether this is really just a way of providing long-term reserved parking for the inhabitants of the big buildings downtown who aren't having to pay to put in parking in their buildings. And I just don't think that it's legal to take taxpayer money, taxpayer land bought with taxpayer money, and give it away to a private entity for little or no revenue, so that they can take the revenue from the garage, and at the same time, give another boon to the developers. I'm sick and tired of this, and it just isn't right. If you're an honest government, you need to be square with the citizens about what the intent is of this garage. And if you want us to trust government, you, the planning board, need to not move forward with this until we get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you Susanna. Uh, Chris?
I just wanted to clarify something, and I think Rob and I both spoke to this at the July 7th meeting, um, that, um, this is not a case of, um, spot zoning. Um, it's an extension of an existing zoning district, and Rob actually had a word for it, which doesn't come to mind right now to me. But it is, um, legal, and perhaps you'd like Rob to say a few words about this.
Rob?
Yeah, I'll just add, um, you know, it's, there's a lot of, um, case law on this, and it's considered a boundary parcel, uh, because it's right up against the BG district, so it's not isolated in any way. So there are, the majority of the cases, in fact, there's very, very few that, uh, have been overturned, but almost all the cases, uh, would find that this is not an example of spot zoning. Uh, and there's different criteria that's used when, when assessing that as well, including whether or not it serves a public good. Uh, but I think it's our opinion at this point that it would not, uh, not constitute a, an example of spot zoning.
Okay, so no spot zoning, alright. Um, so I think that's what we have from, uh, the public. And we can open it up again to, um, the board. Janet. And then Doug.
I was, I was wondering if, A, we could take a break, and then I realized, I was looking at my notes, and that Doug and I, um, met with Christine for a site visit. And so there were some questions and answers from that. I just realized from looking at that. So.
Did I skip over that? I'm sorry. Do, do you want to speak to that, or, or Doug?
But I kind of wanted, I wanted to know if we could take a break also. I have a-
Yeah, I, 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 I kind of wanted to speak to that as well, because I, I, I didn't think we'd be going long tonight, and, uh, so we just, not Tom long, but, um, I thought we would, uh, not have, you know, 11:30, whatever. So I apologize for that, and, and if, uh, we, we certainly could take a break. Because it's back in our court. So, good idea Janet. Uh, so let's take it like a five-minute recess. Uh, just take your video off and, and, and you know, mute, and, uh, we'll get back at around, uh, 9:05. Got everybody back. Yeah, 1, 2, 3, 4. Five of us. Uh, I got a, a text from, um, from Maria. She's, she's in the car, coming back from New York. But obviously, she won't be joining us, but, um, so we want to get us back engaged here Pam?
Okay, you're good Jack.
Alrighty.
At 9:05.
Okay, so I think we're back to, uh, you know, we heard, you know, public comment. I think we need, you know, additional discussion from the planning board. And, uh, you know, looking for, for any put, input from, uh, you know, the five of us that are here, so. Uh, Johanna, and then, oh, Chris first, and then Johanna, and then Doug.
So I just wanted to note that I got in touch with our town attorney, um, Joel Bard, about the voting quantum that's required for a recommendation from the planning board, and even though this is a zoning amendment that you're voting on, um, the recommendation only takes a majority of those present and voting, rather than a two-thirds majority, as it does for the town council to vote. So I thought you might want to know that. Thank you.
Thanks Chris. So we have Johanna, uh, Doug, and then Tom. Johanna?
Well, I will say, I feel a little bit like we're stuck in a chicken and egg scenario, um, where people are thirsty for more information, but from what George and what others have said, we can't really get that information until we open the door to this idea, because then, you know, a developer who actually has viable skin in the game will put in the energy and the work to do it. And so one of the things that I keep coming back to is the finances of this all, and what that means for the town and for taxpayers. So it seems like if we don't open the door to this, you know, kind of other use, we are stuck with the parking lot, basically as it is. And it's already dilapidated, and it's going to cost the town roughly $300,000, if not more, because costs likely have gone up to make it usable for its current use. And then, you know, and like, is that the best use? Uh, you know, I, I don't know. I don't really know, but, um, you know, my guess is probably not. Like, if we want, if there's, if people feel there's a strong need for parking, you know, we could maximize, this would be a site where we maximize it, and it seems like Boltwood isn't as good, and Amity Street is an option, but it's too small, and then it would cost like $265,000, roughly, took, if they were going to acquire the Bank of America lot. So just like, I recognize the chicken and egg nature of it, but just from a pure financial standpoint, my thinking right now is open up this opportunity to explore this, so that we can get the information that we need, whether that's the parking study, and the, the design schematics, and kind of all the stuff that we want. And then I don't quite know what to do about the three-story versus five-story stuff, and how to make people feel like there are assurances on that. So those are my thoughts.
Good ones. Thank you Johanna. Um, Doug, and then Tom, and then Janet.
Yeah, I guess, um, I, I mean, there's several things that I heard in the public comments, uh, you know, I do have comments about, I, uh, you know, there was comment that this site is not particularly visible. And I think of the Northampton garage behind Thorns, which you could drive around in on the main streets of Northampton for a while, and never know it was there. So I'm not sure I buy that argument. Um, and then the folks who are saying, you know, nobody's going to build a parking garage that is only going to break even. Uh, I don't buy that either, because the people that are going to build this garage would be people that own other property in town, and want to make their other property more valuable. So, um, you know, they may break even on the garage, but they're going to have a benefit from having a more attractive downtown for people to park in. And, or, or shop, or live, or whatever. I'm, I'm really torn, um, about this. You know, I don't want to vote against it, but I'm not really feeling particularly enthused about voting for it. You know, the people that want more, more, uh, information and floor plans, sure, I could go ahead and draw you a parking garage on that site. And the, the plan that I drew would look pretty much like the parking lot that's right there, right now. So, you know, it's going to be two tiers of 60 feet with a parking, uh, spot on each side, and a 20-foot travel lane in the middle. And it's going to be buried one story into grade, uh, because of the slope of the site. And, um, yeah, you know, you could either access it through the existing alley, or off of North Pleasant Street. So I'm not sure it's really worth anybody's time to make a drawing for this hearing and, and what we're about right now. You know, if folks want to, uh, continue the hearing again, I'm not sure there's any particular deadline that we need to do this by. You know, we could continue it until November. Just, just to, just for the heck of it. Just, we, we didn't kill it, but we didn't do anything with it. And, um, And, you know, in the meantime, town council could, could change and become more enthused, or maybe the planning board would have time, or the planning staff would have time to work on it. So I, I'm, I'm, you know, right now I, I'm, I'm almost an abstained vote. But I'm, I would like to hear from Tom and anybody else who hasn't spoken much.
Very good, Doug. I mean, I, I, I expressed your sentiments there. So we have Janet and Tom.
So, um, everything happens in context. And so right now we have like 18 or 19 zoning amendments. Kind of in the hopper, I've lost kind of track. And so, and, you know, one of our jobs is to do, analyze and review them and make recommendations. And, and I'm wondering like, what an intermediate step could be? Because right now I couldn't vote to recommend this spot, this rezoning. I couldn't vote, I'm not going to vote against, you know, a parking garage on this spot. I just don't know enough stuff. So I'm sorry, I have like a whining dog in the background, but so.
I was wondering that was on my.
Our emotional state after five weeks of meetings, but anyway, so Daisy is expressing something. But anyway, so I'm wondering, I'm looking for like an intermediate step that doesn't shut the door on this idea for two years. Because that doesn't seem right either. So I, I wondered, you know, like if, if, you know, say we recommend not to or whatever, or the town council votes against it, that kind of dooms the idea for two years unless the planning board wants to bring it back. I do think we need more information. I don't think it's super extensive or super expensive. I do, I do worry about these 20-foot setbacks. I do think I'd like to see more stuff. I'm wondering if the proponents of the counselors that propose this could withdraw this zoning amendment. And then like request what I think Doug was saying earlier, ask the town manager to start a process of analysis. And not just put that on the planning department. You know, I'm sure people in the planning board would be happy to, I, you know, do a little task force or something or, but also the bid, you know, has skin in the game and they have resources. There's a bidder or some people who have an architect who already done some drawings. And I just wondered if the intermediate move would be just to withdraw this zoning amendment and start kind of a more usual process to consider this. And so I, I don't have, you know, I just need more information and I don't want to kill it. And I don't see myself going forward with this without more information. You know, even, even questions we had at the site visit was, you know, how does the town have, you know, is, do we have like a egress from North Pleasant Street? Do we have an easement to allowing, you know, people to come in to use the lot or on North, you know, on North Prospect? Like we, you know, kind of what's there? Why does CVS have its parking spaces on town land, you know? But, but I, I do think it will just give some breathing space and some time. And we need some breathing space right now. We're doing too much. And I don't want to give something short shrift, but I feel like this is just not enough stuff. So I wondered if people would think about an intermediate step and we could continue it and talk about it in another month or so or, and hopefully get that information. Or, you know, kind of put it into the usual process for a little more, so that, that's my idea. Just if it's withdrawn and comes back in, in the more usual way of a little more analysis and building on past work.
Thank you, Janet. Tom?
Sure. So as of now, I can't vote on this, but I did, I mean, I've been listening and I have some really interesting sort of reactions. And I, I like the way Johanna framed it and it was similar to my thoughts. I also think that both Janet and Doug are sharing a similar kind of feeling in the sense of not knowing where we are. And I, as of listening to just this hearing, I wasn't at the last one, but I'm not entirely sure what we're, what the risk is, right? And I think George had mentioned it's a low-risk proposition to just rezone this with conditions. And if we do so, what are we risking by inviting that? And I think that's what I want to know most of all before we go forward. Like I'm not worried about what comes after because we'll get to look at that again and have to approve that before it gets built, right? Or before it goes to the next steps as part of the planning process. But I'm, I'm interested in what people's perceived. Because I've been reading or listening to all the comments from the, the, the public as well as the planning board. And I'm, I'm trying to get a feel for what those risks are. So I think that would help me better understand what's going on and maybe the public better understand how we get, Janet, as you're saying, from here to the next step, right? What, what do we need to know in order to make this? So what are the risks we, we're taking by opening this up to, you know, an outside firm to come in and, and make a proposal? And I don't feel like I know that answer yet, but maybe other people, you know, have jotted down a list. Or I, I just didn't hear enough of them.
Yeah, so I, Chris, you know, you've heard from, I think, all of us. And I don't know if, you know, you or George or Rob want to follow up, but you know, there, there definitely are some, you know, concerns. You know, process-related timing, you know, planning versus zoning sort of things. So I will call on Chris first and then George.
So one thing people used to do during town meeting time was to recommend referral back to the planning board for further study. So that's one option that you could recommend to town council that this would be referred back to the planning board. And that you would ask town council to ask the town manager to direct the planning department to work on this. I mean, that's, that's a possibility. But sending it back to the planning board and the planning department for further study is one option.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. George and then I think I saw Doug's hand up. So George and then Doug.
George, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. I'm going to suggest, I hear that the question of risk needs to be clarified. And I feel very strongly that we need to hear from the bid. And I'm, well, discouraged a little bit tonight that, that there were not members here from the business community speaking. So I think you really need to hear from them. And if you don't hear from them, then that raises red flags in my own mind, quite frankly. So I would suggest, rather than referral to the, to the planning department and have them work on it or to the town manager, both of whom are extraordinarily busy. That, that if you're willing to do this in a month, I mean, again, there's no rush here, but within a month or two, whenever given schedule, which is, I know is difficult, but we come back, address the question of, I mean, and there may be some other questions you want that, that you'll note. But address the question of risk and have, hear from the business community. We're hearing from the residents appropriately, but we need to hear from the restaurant owners, the shop owners, from members of the bid. Just about why they want this. Because that's what's driving it for me. I, I think it's important for the future of our downtown. It's important for the future of what's coming. But as you can see tonight, I'm one voice. And so I think the other thing that I would expect at this, if we did a continuance is that there would be voices from the business community that would show up and, and tell us what they think. I would like to hear from them, myself, actually. And if there are other things, I can tell you this, they're, they're not going to be studies of other sites. The interest is in this site. And if you are, if you share with me the sense that this has some legs and is worth looking at, then let's look at it. But I, I'm, you're not going to get somebody looking at Boltwood or somebody looking at, you know, Amity and, and giving you options. That's not what's going on here. So if you are open to that, looking at this site, getting a clear sense of what the risks are and putting the burden on, really on the, on us, the presenters, not on the planning staff, not on, not on the town manager. And continue it for say a month or whenever, in the next month or two, that's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I, I feel like we're having a, a hard time unhitching the zoning change from the you know, ultimate, you know, proposal here, which is, which is, again, you know, everything's above board here, does, you know, full disclosure, that sort of thing.
I'm not suggesting that we're going to present a, a set of drawings or a plan.
Right. Oh, I understand. But I just, but we're locked into what this is all about. And so it's very challenging, I think, for us. So, so we have Doug and Janet.
Yeah, I, I simply raised my hand because I was not sure, did Chris, Chris, did you mean to say that we could recommend that this be referred back to us as a planning board? Or did you mean to say the planning staff?
I meant to say, not that it would be referred back because it didn't come to, from the planning board to begin with. But that it be referred to the planning board and the planning staff for further study.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
So I was, I, I would add to that, I don't know if the TAC has time to do it, but I know there's people in the TAC who are transportation people. It would be helpful to get them to come in and talk to us also. And then I was interested in the idea of the BN zoning. I just hadn't really thought that through. I knew there were other zoning options and that would give you flexibility about lot coverage. And then limit to three stories and, oh, you know, that providing that buffer to the RG that, that we do. So I, I think that's it. The other thing is, is that when we, I talk about a diagram, I don't, I'm not talking about something super extensive. In fact, a lot of it is in that 1990 report, which would have to be updated and maybe stuff. I don't think it's super complicated. So that would maybe, you know, if we refer it back to us, there's time to do that. And then if we continue the hearing, there's time to do that. I would say a little bit more than four weeks because I think that time will go fast in terms of what we're working on now. So maybe a little bit more. I'm open to both.
Yeah, so does, I, I mean, I, I, I'm wondering if anyone's to move, you know, that we continue this hearing. To, you know, a date in September that's agreeable to all of us. But I see, you know, Chris and then Doug's hands are up. So Chris?
I just wanted to let you know when the dates in September were. There's one date which is September 1st and you will be hearing a, a presentation about an Amherst College Wayfinding Sign Project on that night. And we don't really have anything else. We have a minor thing for the Survival Center. So September 1st is a possibility and September 29th is a possibility. There are no dates in the middle of September thus far because of religious holidays.
So, you know, it, it just seems like we need a little bit more, you know, work done to, I think, to satisfy some of the concerns that I've heard. So I'm wondering if the September 1st is, is too soon. But Doug, your thoughts?
I'd like to move that we continue this hearing until September 29th.
Okay. I will second that.
Yes.
Any discussion amongst the board? I see none. Okay, roll call. Doug?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Janet?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
And I am an I as well. So that's five zero for a continuance of the hearing to September 29th.
I think we should stated a time also. So let's say 7 o'clock on September 29th. The Amherst College project will probably take longer than a half hour. But if you say 7 o'clock, then people who are interested can arrive at that time.
Okay. Amherst College is on September 1st.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah. So we have, so we may have another project that night. But so you, why don't you say 6:35 on September 29th? All right?
6:35.
6:35, September 29th. Thank you.
Very good. And George, any closing? Oh, you have your hand up. Yeah.
Not so much closing remarks, except thank you to all of you. It's taken longer, I know, than we hoped. But I think this has been very fruitful. It's been very helpful to me, hearing from all of you. And, and so I appreciate that. Just want to be clear, you are expecting, I believe, a presentation from us on the 29th that would address, I have five items here that you would like us to address. The risks, what they are exactly, if you just rezone, what would the, the risk be to the town? I would expect a presentation from the bid or from the business community, maybe a number of people, but at least someone speaking to that. Requested the TAC look at this and provide some sort of input. And that we look at the BN zoning option and that, that's what I have. Now, am I missing anything?
Well, I, I, I guess they're looking at like a, maybe a conceptual site plan. Again, you're just looking at zoning change, but I guess, you know, seeing, seeing this thing. Again, it's really hard to unlink the zoning change from what the intended purpose is down the work and down the line, but.
So I guess I'm asking, yeah, what, what do you as a group, what do you want from us? Do you want some kind of conceptual plan?
Is that fair to ask, Chris?
Well, if the bid is involved, the bid has members who are architects. And if they think this is a good idea, they may be willing to do that.
I can ask them and, and urge them to consider that, but I guess I can, I certainly can't promise it, certainly not tonight. But I would ask in, in the presentation that they would, they would consider that.
So we have Doug and then Janet. Doug?
Yeah, I was just going to say I don't really need to see a concept design. And I think if there's going to be a competitive RFP process that comes out of this at some point, the, the people that might enter that may not want to show their hand. So I, I think you are in a bit of a rock, you know, in a hard place. But I think some support from the bid would be, would be great, you know? I mean, why are we doing this?
I think you're absolutely right, yeah.
Thank you, Doug. Janet?
So I, I would like to have information on the other two options. And so, you know, if combining the Amity Street lot with the Bank of America lot gives you 400 parking spaces and an attractive storefronts, you know, that might be gold compared to, you know, just an extra 123 spaces. And so, you know, if you look at the 1990 report, it's a little bit out of date because I think, it's a little out of date, but it's, it's not, they don't have super complicated drawings of the, the Bank Center lot or the Amity Street lot. And so, and actually there's a house in the Amity Street area that is no longer exists. And the Bank of Ameri, the People's Bank came in. So things have changed a bit, but I don't think they're, they're not super complicated drawings. And so I think if you have some bid architects, they could just put us some, some stuff together and estimate like, oh, how many spots? They can do. If they can't do that, then we're sort of left kind of looking at this one option, wondering what else is out there.
Oh, that's what I've said. This is the one option on the table. But if the board wants this, then I would have to. But at this time, what I'm offering or what I'm willing to do is bring forward, you know, people speaking on this site. That's it. Not looking at other sites, not doing comparative analysis, nothing like that. They would be speaking on why they think this site is, is good for the town, good for business, why they are pushing it. And why they think that if, if you do rezone, there will be interest in doing something. That's what I can offer you. That's it.
And I, I would add like, you know, also, I mean, looking at your butters, I mean, Saint, Saint Bridgetts.
Yep.
Maybe, you know, willing to, you know, do something and CBS may be willing to do something. And it's like, it would be, I think, a shame, you know, not to really work with the butters to make sure that this thing is fully, you know, evaluated versus like, you know, shoehorning it into the, the town owned portion of that. Because it is, you know, if we're going to have a parking garage, it seems like, yeah, that, that would be a great place to have it. So some work to do, I think. So we voted to, to continue, to continue this to the 29th. And George, thank you so much. You did a great job. And I guess we get back into our, you know, agenda here, old business, new business. Thank you. Chris, what do we have for old business?
No old business. No old business.
Okay, new business.
New business is that I'm going to be asking you to vote on an extension of the time for the preliminary subdivision plan to be reviewed. Um, the preliminary subdivision plan, which you know about, is on eleven thirteen and fifteen East Pleasant Street. And, um, it has, it was filed with the town clerk on July twelfth. The date of August twenty-sixth is day forty-five. So, um, I'm going to be bringing, um, a request that you vote to extend that time to you on, um, August eighteenth. And I may need to also advertise a public hearing for August twenty-fifth. I have to get a final confirmation about that. Um, and so far I have Doug Marshall, who has volunteered himself to um, come on that night and he and I could come on that night if we need to open a public hearing on August twenty-fifth and spend very little time. And maybe we could get, um, one of our staff members here in, um, continuing that public hearing to sometime in the future. So anyway, it's this complicated situation, but I wanted to let you know that I, I would like to bring a vote to you on August eighteenth for you to, um, decide whether to, um, grant an extension of that time of forty-five days to review. So that's one thing that's coming.
Wh- wh- uh, which project was that? I'm sorry.
Oh, this is the preliminary subdivision plan that was filed by, um, filed by the owner. It's actually not, it was really filed by the owner of the Archipelago project site. Yeah.
All right. Sorry about that. No.
And, and, yeah, so.
And you had something else?
Well, there are a lot of zoning amendments coming up. I think I sent an email to Jack about what, uh, the plan is, but what we're considering right now is that mixed-use buildings and ADUs would also be coming to you on August eighteenth, and we would save parking and apartments for, um, September first. So that gives you an idea of how it's going to be separated out. Janet had asked that we try to predict, um, you know, what our upcoming meetings will be. So I, I will try to put something together about that, but I thought I'd give you a heads up tonight about it. Okay?
Thank you. Um, Form A in our subdivision applications?
No Form As.
Okay. And then ZPA applications?
None to report tonight.
Good. Um, upcoming SPP, SPRS, U B applications?
So we do have the Amherst College Sign Project, and we also have four sixty-two Main Street, which is going to be coming back to you on August eighteenth. The Amherst College Sign Project will be September first.
Okay. Do we know what beyond September first, what might be on our docket?
The only thing I'm sure of is, well, I'm reasonably sure that the preliminary subdivision plan, uh, if it goes to a public hearing would be on September twenty ninth, which would be the same night as this continuing discussion about rezoning of the parking lot.
All right. Well, just, yeah, just keep us abreast. Um, I know we're, we're looking at, you know, I, I, I think we were gonna, uh, discuss scheduling because, you know, felt a little overloaded, you know, what's coming up, uh, and that, but, um, looks like we're going to take a nice pause, uh, because we're going to meet for two weeks, which is like normal.
A record.
Right. Um, so for the planning board committees and liaison reports, Pioneer Valley Planning Committee, uh, Planning Commission is actually, we haven't met for like a month or two because of, you know, it's summer, uh, which is interesting. So, uh, no news to report there. Um, I did ask them about parking though, to get some input from parking, you know, from other cities and, and Western Mass, and I have not got a response from them, but, um, I think that would be beneficial to us as we're looking at, you know, the parking bylaw, but um, there's also that interaction of they're in a consulting role where we would have to engage them to do certain things, but I just, I just wanted readily available information. And so we'll see what happens. So, um, and then Andrew is not here for the CPA. Doug, I, I'm, I'm waiting with bated breath on your ag commission report here.
No news to report yet. Nothing, nothing has happened. We're, we're, we're taking a summer holiday.
Oh, nice.
Oh.
I should have joined that committee.
Oh, my goodness. All right. Um, so, uh, Tom, design review.
Um, nothing, we haven't met, um, since we talked about Eleven Pleasant. So, um, we have an upcoming meeting. Talking about some signage for Boltwood. Um, I'll update you guys after that meeting. It's next week.
Okay. Thank you. And, uh, CRC news, Chris?
CRC met on the twenty-seventh of July, but, um, they didn't need to have us there. They were talking about the, uh, housing policy. And, um, their upcoming meeting though is going to be interesting. They're going to be discussing the rezoning of the parking lot that you all spent a lot of time on tonight. They're going to be discussing that on August tenth. And then, um, depending on how much time they have, they're also probably going to be discussing the other zoning amendments, but they're reluctant to, um, act on any of their recommendations until after the planning board acts. So um, I don't think they will actually vote next Tuesday, but any of you who have time might want to tune into their CRC meeting, which starts at two o'clock on Tuesday.
Very good. Well, I'm on vacation for the first time, uh, next week. Uh, that's my report. Uh, excited about that. I'll make sure that none of you can contact me. I'll be unplugged. Um, so, um, report staff, Chris?
I'm on vacation next week too, so nothing's gonna happen.
Yay.
No, that's not true. The planning staff is going to be busy and Rob's.
Oh, my God. I can imagine.
And Pam.
You're gonna drive Rob crazy.
What a summer. Yeah. So, um, we adjourn and thank you, Rob, for joining us. Um, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Bye-bye. Good night.
Good night.